This October 17th meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission, for those who are willing and able, please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we are so grateful for the protection you provided to the citizens of Tallahassee during Hurricane Michael. Thank you for the members of our community who have come together to help each other, and numerous employees and volunteers, and the assistance each one of them have provided each other. Bless them for their service, commitment, and dedication to helping others. God, we think about our surrounding communities also impacted by the storm. We ask that you continue to provide for their needs. Please help us be a good neighbor as we provide assistance and support to the evacuees and recovery teams. Please grant us wisdom in the matters presented before us today that we may continue to serve our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Mr. Manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, we've updated item 13.03, and item 9.06 has been pulled from the consent portion of the agenda and placed as item 11.01.
Thank you. Commissioners, will you all join me down at the bottom podium for a special presentation?
We wanted to take this time out. This is around the time of year where we take a pause to acknowledge some of our neighbors and friends who have been frankly contributed to this community over the year and really over the years in particular ways. We have throughout the year honored different individuals with acknowledgements, sort of home time hero awards. But the highest award that we're able to offer to a resident in this community is the city's key to the city. Now admittedly, this key doesn't open anything, but we think it is a deserving and fitting way to acknowledge individuals who have contributed so much to all of us. I would like now to call forward Ms. Olene McCaskill and Johnny McCaskill. As we make a quick presentation to them on behalf of the citizens in the city of Tallahassee. Ms. Olene McCaskill, also known as Ms. Olean, also known as Mama Olean, also known as Ms. O, affectionately called all of these names by so many Tallahasseans who she has had, I think, the privilege and the pleasure to feed. Some of us wear it differently than others. Ms. Olean was born in Alabama and moved to Tallahassee, Florida with her mother, Loreen Moore, and her three siblings, Charlie, Edna, and John C. During her youth, she was fascinated with cooking. Since the age of 14, she has been working in restaurants to learn the tricks of the trade and to hone her own skills. In 1995, with the help of some very special individuals, she opened Olean's Cafe at West Tennessee Street in Capital Circle. In March of 1996, she moved her business to its current location at the corner of Adams Street and Palmer Avenue and named it Olean's Restaurant. Now, I know this restaurant well because in 1998 was my first introduction to Olean's, and I know all of us have had the occasion to frequent it from time to time. Over the last 22 years, it's grown to be a cornerstone of our local community, a primary designation for rattlers, Seminoles, Tallahassee natives, visitors, all seeking some world-famous southern cooking and soul food. I thought of no better place to take a very special guest when he was in town, Vice President Joe Biden, and before that, then Senator Barack Obama. When they asked where they should go for a good meal, it was a no-brainer. It was to Ms. Olean's. In fact, Joe Biden, when we got there, asked why there was a menu item named the Obama and not one known the Biden. And Ms. Olean, of course, looked affectionately up at him and said, "Well, you're not Barack Obama." And I believe you've since named an item in his honor. The menu at Olean's is highlighted by her amazing fried chicken, mac and cheese, and of course, as my colleague mentioned here, the Obama breakfast special, which is more food than anyone deserves. She has truly built a landmark for our community, a place filled with gospel music. It doesn't matter what time of day and what day of week, you're going to find a gospel music playing in the background, often surrounded by family, love, and amazing food. One of her patrons said, "You should go to the cafe for food, but most importantly, for Ms. Olean." The check to pay my bill that she gave me said, "God bless you, Ms. O," and then she gave us an affectionate hug. Today, Ms. Olean, we thank you. We thank you for not only the work you've done to feed our bellies, but the work you've done to feed our soul. And on behalf of this commission, it is our pleasure to present you with the Key to the City.
First of all, give an honor to Christ, who is the head of my life and in everything that I do. As you all know, it takes, I used, my grandmother used to say, "It takes a village to raise a child," but it takes the whole community to keep a business together. And I appreciate everybody that have come out and to Olean's and patronized, and if you thought about it, you rode by, you say, "You know what? I'm gonna stop in there one day." And I've had several people to do that, and they say, "You know what? I'm glad I came, 'cause you're gonna get some ministering too." And that's what I do. And one year, I got the Spoon Award, and I tell you, I haven't stopped with that spoon yet. It turns early in the morning, and it's just my pleasure to just be here to accept this award on this great occasion. My husband thanks to him, my children thanks to him, my nephews, my nieces, sister-in-laws, everybody. But, you know, it takes good people to stick by you, to help do the job, 'cause you can't do it by yourself. And so I'm just so grateful and so thankful to be the one to get the key.
Oh, man. Y'all can see, very appropriate. And if you have not been to Ms. Olean's, you've got your official invitation now. I'd like to call up Pastor Brant Copeland to the front, somebody who many of us in this community know well for his service. He's known by his reputation, commitment, volunteerism, and service all throughout this community. Since 1985, Pastor Brant Copeland has been a stalwart in our community, leading First Presbyterian Church, the oldest church in Tallahassee. In the late 80s, Pastor Copeland led the effort to receive federal assistance for a cold night shelter for Tallahassee's homeless community, as well as providing food and clothing to those who are most disadvantaged in our community. He co-chairs the Tallahassee Interfaith Clergy, an organization committed to interfaith conversation and cooperation on social action that improves the quality of life for everybody in our community, not just some, but for all. And he has served on the boards of the Red Cross, Big Ben Cares, the City of Tallahassee's Anti-Apartheid Committee, the Ethics Advisory Committee, Big Ben Hospice, and so many more. Pastor Copeland has also served as a trustee of the Kindred Spirits Charitable Trust, a ministry for prisoners on death row in their families. And the aftermath of the Pulse nightclub shooting, Pastor Copeland and First Presbyterian brought our entire community together by hosting a community vigil and to stand in solidarity in the face of hate. And he was featured as a presenter at our Tallahassee Forbes Symposium later this past year. Pastor Copeland exemplifies what it means to be a servant leader and puts the well-being of his congregation and our community at the forefront of everything that he does. I've had the privilege and the pleasure to work alongside Pastor Copeland the entirety of my time, being elected here for 15 years. He really, in my opinion, exemplifies true faith, not just through words, but through his actions and through his service. He is a friend to all. I don't know that there is a stranger to him. And I would just want to say on behalf of a very, very grateful city, a very, very grateful community, Pastor Copeland, it is our honor to collectively present to you, again, the key that doesn't open anything, but you're the man who opens eyes and opens hearts and quite frankly, has opened our community up for so many, and so for that, we are grateful. Please help me honor Dr. Brant Copeland.
Y'all have already had the sermon, so I'm not going to try to follow that. I accept this great honor on behalf of First Presbyterian Church and its members. And one small correction, 22 United Methodist is older than us, but our building's the oldest.
He's going to be slightly delayed to today's meeting. Commissioners, we're now on to speakers who are here to speak on agended items. Are there any speakers?
Yes, Mayor, we do have several speakers. I'll let speakers know at this time that you'll each have three minutes for your remarks. There will be a timer and a light immediately in front of you that you'll see as green and go to yellow and then red when the three minutes have expired. We have about 30 minutes allotted for this portion of the meeting, Mayor. We should be able to accommodate each of the speakers. The first will be Kathleen Brennan, followed by Gus Fernandez. Most of the speakers are speaking on the storm update, but I believe Ms. Brennan also commenting on the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls.
Good afternoon, everyone.
If you would give your name and address, we'd appreciate it for the record. Thank you.
Kathleen Brennan, 4778 Lane Cashellane, 32309. I wanted to come here today because they say old dogs can't learn new tricks, and not to say you all are old dogs, but I tell you what, you all learned a ton from Hermine. I mean, it is amazing. You had the listening sessions, you listened, you learned, and you implemented. I just, I just think you did a fantastic job, and thank you so much. You showed leadership individually, as a group, and it wasn't just before and during and after the storm, but since Hermine. I mean, you all took a lot of time to listen to the community, find out what went wrong, and try to fix it. And you all did a much better job with a much bigger storm. There's still some things to be improved. I don't think we need wood poles anymore. I think we gotta get cement ones. I mean, come on, you know? But it was wonderful. The other part that I think is very impressive, and this will be going forward, is the Urban Forest Master Plan that you started working on before Hermine and are still, I think it's rolling out soon. And I think the important thing with that is education, because we don't want to demonize our trees. We love our trees, but we need them to be healthy, we need it to be the right one in the right spot. And if that happens, then they actually will protect us during a storm. The other part that I wanted to say was to thank you for, with the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. I'm the past president of the Oasis Center for Women and Girls, and we have had the privilege to partner with you and the county in providing services to the commission. And I just wanted to thank you for that and look forward to having a very productive, ongoing partnership with you. Bravo. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Appreciate it. The next speaker actually is Michael Capaneri and then Gus Fernandez.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioners and Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to hopefully get some helpful information out to the community. So I just wanted to provide an update on the Presidential Disaster Declaration for Individual Assistance as a result of Hurricane Michael. And just yesterday, Leon County was added to that disaster declaration for individual assistance.
Thank you, by the way.
Absolutely. So we just want to encourage all of those that were affected prior to registering for assistance with FEMA to go ahead and file insurance, just to file that policy claim, to get that process moving as quickly as possible. And then after you've done that, if you've been affected, go ahead and register for assistance with FEMA at either 800-621-33, I'm sorry, 800-621-3362. That's 800-621-3362, or disasterassistance, just one word, .gov, disasterassistance.gov. This is information that we'll make sure to provide, so you can push it out in various forms and fashions to the community. And by registering for assistance, folks will be able to possibly get connected with voluntary or community organizations that might be active in the disaster that could provide help, or even help with FEMA. So again, we just want to encourage folks that have been affected to, first and foremost, get those insurance policies filed as quickly as possible, and then go ahead and register for assistance with the agency if you've been affected. And I know that you're going to hear from my colleague with the Small Business Administration, I think, next. And I think oftentimes, when people think of SBA or small business, it's not necessarily intuitive. You don't think about that when it comes to assistance for individuals, but they really play a crucial role when it comes to disaster assistance. So with that, I was going to allow my colleague, Gus, from SBA to come up and hopefully offer some helpful information as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gus Fernandez, and then it'll be Faith Harkey.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here because, like my partner was saying, a major issue that we have is when someone is registered with FEMA, there might be a referral to the SBA. And it goes without saying that most people will say, "I don't want a loan." That is not the process. The process that we have to follow is will determine whether you would qualify for a loan or not. If you do not qualify for a loan, then we will refer you back to FEMA, possibly for other needs assistance. So I encourage everyone that is referred to the SBA. On average, it's about 30% of the applicants that register with FEMA. And some information they gave FEMA, it's an indication that SBA might be the best program for them. We'll make that consideration. If we see that is doable, we'll make the loan. If not, we may refer them back to FEMA for other needs assistance. So I just beg you to please pass that along.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for having us here.
Thank you. Next is Faith Harkey, and then Tasha Pizzaro.
My name is Faith Harkey. I live in southeast Tallahassee, and I am a graduate of the 2017 Neighborhood Leadership Academy also. My husband and I moved back to Tallahassee in June of 2016, so we were here in time for all three hurricanes. I, for one, thought that Hermine was actually handled very well, but when the call went out to attend listening sessions about the hurricane forums, I attended, and I shared that one challenge that I had had was about, I had difficulty finding information about whether the water supply was workable still after the storm, and it may have just been because I was a newcomer and I didn't know where to look. But I mentioned it at the forum, and I'll tell you what, this time, communication-wise, there was no question. It was always clearly posted on the daily updates. I never had any doubts about whether we could use the water from the tap. It was awesome. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that communications were always fantastic, and I was also, when you did the daily updates where you sort of gathered everybody together, it was fabulous because I always had the sense that things were being efficiently and competently handled, that the leadership was on top of things, and that there was so much attention to safety. And so I never felt any need to panic, and so, you know, it's just, it's a scary time. And so it was great to always be able to sort of touch base and feel like, "All right, we're set, we're a unit, we're together." So I wanted to offer that. And then I also was so moved to see the photos. I don't know if y'all saw the major photo of all the linemen, all the trucks, and just the amount of planning that went into that. And also, I'm so proud to be part of, you know, Tallahassee reciprocating now, now that we're starting to get on our feet. I saw that our surcrues are headed out to Panama City today. I'm so excited to just, the longer I'm here, the prouder I am to be a Tallahassee citizen. So I appreciate that. Finally, the only other thing is that y'all decided, and I wondered if you would, to go ahead and hold the longest table on Sunday, because, you know, it's a lot to put together after all of that chaos, but you went forward with it, and it was my first one I attended, and I had an amazing time, and it was such a good chance to reconnect with everybody after the storm, and just to say as a group, here we are, and we're safe. So I just wanted to thank you all for all of that and let you know that I really appreciate your work. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next is Tasha Pizzaro, followed by Amber Tynan. Mayor, you like these Tallahassee Proud shirts we're seeing?
Love them.
Hey, good evening. Well, I wanted to thank your Communication Department for inviting me to speak to you guys today, both as a citizen but also as a small business owner. I think hurricanes bring out the best in Tallahassee, and that's its people. You know, we live up in Kalaran Acres, and, you know, during Hermine and also this hurricane, we're just kind of locked into our little streets. And to see different pockets of our street pull out the barbecues, that wasn't the first thing that was taken out. But on Thursday morning, all the chainsaws came out, the ladders came out, and just to see our neighbors, and we have a lot of elderly people on our street that have lived there for 30-plus years, and so it was just, you know, get to work, get everyone's yards cleared, get the trees down, and then the lawn chairs came out and we just hung out together. And, you know, those that had the generators welcomed neighbors over to get coffee, because some folks can't function in the morning without their cup of coffee, and so they knew whose house to go to to get a cup of coffee. We had extension cords going from house to house, house to generator, I should say, you know, keeping, you know, a neighbor's refrigerator warm next door. And, you know, we just carried that through with, you know, the barbecues, you know, feeding different pockets of our street. One of our neighbor's sons, he actually got power back and offered to cook us a meal and brought us some jambalaya up to our street, and then we had smores. That was kind of our longest table up there in the Kalaran area, but it was just so nice to see. And that's what we did during Hermine as well, just kind of get together and to help each other. And as a small business owner, you know, Tallahassee, the people of Tallahassee keep me open. I own the Mama Pea's Ice Cream Truck, and I rely on people. And a tree fell on my truck, but it was okay. And as soon as we were able to, my husband was able to trim some branches off, I wasn't able to go far, just up and down my streets, treating my neighbors to free ice cream, but then we got out on Friday, and it was so nice to see my customers safe and sound. But they began leaving money to say, "If you see linemen or tree service people, please, you know, tell them thank you, we want to treat them to free ice cream." And by the end of the weekend, we started bumping into people and saying, "Here, this is from the people of Tallahassee, they want to say thank you." If they didn't get ice cream, they got frozen Gatorades, and so they were very thankful for that. I know we did have a tree service company from Arkansas, and they worked on our street all day, getting a bunch of neighbors together, and we made sure that they felt very welcome with homemade lemonade from the lemons that didn't blow off the tree. But again, Tallahassee has just been amazing, and we're actually going to be going out tonight and on Friday night to get some of the lineman ice cream that one of the local banks has offered to treat them. So Tallahassee, again, when the hurricanes come, it brings out the best in all of us. And thank you guys for everything that you've done and all of the people that work behind you.
Awesome. Thank you. Amber Tynan, and then Rocky Hanna.
Good afternoon. So sorry for my appearance. It's been a busy day. I want to echo the sentiment of everybody here. You guys have done a tremendous job in coordination with the county and helping really with the relief efforts here. I wrote an article that will be featured in The Democrat on Monday and just really talked about the pride that I have for our city, for all of you, for your leadership, as well as our agencies representing United Partners for Human Services. So many of our agencies were deployed and activated and still are in the disaster recovery relief, and I'm pleased that your Communications Department asked me to come and speak today a little bit about what they've been doing. A number of them are in the room. 211, American Red Cross, Salvation Army, Second Harvest have all been working nonstop around the clock to not only provide the necessary resources here to Tallahassee but to our surrounding counties. And I can't tell you how proud I am of them, but how proud everyone in every constituent here should be proud of them as well. But one of the things that we have seen a huge need for is for neighboring counties, and we recognize this about 20, 36 hours ago now, in working with Jerry at Coad, with the county, as well as some of our agencies reporting back a number of the needs that the rural community have. And we have partnered not only with Costco but with Kristen Dozier and Greg Tisch, and we've done a community-wide relief drive today, that's why I look like this, so sorry, where we have actually packed four Penske trucks that are 36-foot long, full, that are going to go to four very specific rural communities. Calhoun County, it's going to be Bluntstown and Alfa. In Gulf County, it's going to be White City, Port St. Joe area. Gadsden County, the entire county, as well as Jackson County, specifically Malone. And they reported to us specifically that they have a complete shortage of water, as well as gas and propane, and we've been able to meet that complete need today because of the generosity of this community. So again, you all should be very proud of those that you represent. I will say, in the coordination of this and seeing the generosity and everything that we all want to do, I would love to see moving forward a greater support from not only city and the county with the coordination of drives like this, so that we can eliminate overlap and help maximize a lot of those efforts, but I can't tell you again just how much every little bit does count, and again, just happy to be a small part of it.
Indeed. Thank you for your work. After Mr. Hanna will be Emmett Reed.
I think I have just three minutes left on my parking meter, so thank you for having me. Rocky Hanna, 2757 West Pensacola Street, Tallahassee, Florida, 32304. Two Sundays ago, I was walking into the Circle K, and this man was walking out, and he looked at me and said, "Rocky, it looks like you're going to have a busy week." And I looked and I said, "Well, every week's pretty busy in our school system, but I guess it'll be busy." So I get home, and I'm like, "I wonder what the guy was talking about?" Turned on the weather channel, and I'm like, "You gotta be kidding me. Really? Just when I thought we had made it through the season." So we get to school, get to work Monday morning, and the thing was, it was moving quickly. And by Monday afternoon, we were meeting with folks in the EOC to turn our schools into emergency shelters on Tuesday. And at noon on Tuesday, a number of our schools turned into emergency shelters. We started welcoming residents. A lot of our school administrators left their homes and their families to operate these emergency shelters. Couldn't be more proud of them. People behind me would be absolutely amazed at the operation of the EOC. I mean, it makes me proud to be a part of this community, to watch how seamless the operation operation was. After the storm was over, the sun came up on Thursday morning, everybody came out of their house, and I agree, it brought out the best of Tallahassee. Neighbors came out of their cocoons, kids actually played on the streets and rode their bikes. I mean, heaven forbid, they turned their, they put their cell phones down. But then we went back to work, putting our city back together. Word got back to me, I don't know whether it was right or not, but midday on Friday, that the city of Tallahassee announced that they were going to have 90% of our residents back online by Sunday evening. At that point, I was being pressured, you know how it is, we're going to have school, or not going to have school, we're going to have school, not have, and everybody waits on Leon County school system to make a decision. Florida State, state agencies. So after hearing that and getting word back from the city, I made the decision that we would open school Monday morning and get back to a sense of normalcy, as you said, Mayor. But I was going to, I was counting on you, that 90% would come to fruition. At that point, we had 30 schools, over 30 schools that did not have power. People were calling from my head. I mean, I'm going to be honest with you, some people wanted my predecessor back in office, I mean, it was, but you did it. You did it. And I'm here to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And not only you, but they, but you and the county and the Talquin Electric, and we whittled that number from 30 down to 20, down to 15, down to 10, down to four, and then there was one, DeSoto Trail. And DeSoto Trail almost came to me like the Ferris Bueller, Ferris Bueller, have you heard about DeSoto? DeSoto, we're waiting on DeSoto. And Sunday night, DeSoto came back online. And I was on a DeSoto bus early, early Monday morning, riding the school with the kids to make sure they were safe. And we just wanted, I want to show you this, those kids at DeSoto and other schools wrote hundreds and hundreds of thank you letters to linesmen in our community that we're going to share with them. You have kindergarten kids here, you have one, have a kindergarten kid, thank you, the linesman shimmying up, literally shimmying up the power pole. Here's a kindergarten kid, thank you for all you do, thank you for power back at my house and back at my school. This would not have happened without your leadership. And it makes me proud, proud, proud to be a resident in this community and be a partner with you. Thank you and God bless you, Mr. Superintendent.
If I could just say to the superintendent, we, for the first time, had the superintendent take over sheltering operations. Typically, they have been done in this community by the Red Cross. And the superintendent stepped up to the table in partnership with our partnering agencies, pulled his personnel from the comfort of their homes. I went to visit a number of those shelters where we had school administrators, teachers, teaching professionals and staff providing refuge, not just for people in Leon County, but those who had traveled from the outline counties that would have been devastated and were ultimately devastated by the impacts of Hurricane Hermine. You ran an operation that was professional, it was top class, folks had exactly what they needed when they needed it, and you didn't have to do that. And the super, the school board under your leadership stepped up to serve that role. And I know that our surrounding communities, in addition to those of us here in Tallahassee who needed the benefit of those shelters, are eternally grateful to you and your team for doing that. So thank you for what you do.
Emmett Reed, and he'll be followed by Jeremy Cohen.
Emmett Reed, I'm the Executive Director of Florida Healthcare Association located at 307 West Park Avenue. I prepared my remarks so I wouldn't forget anything. We represent 82% of all the nursing homes in the state of Florida, that's almost 600 nursing homes. Preparation for Hurricane Michael and its impact on our local nursing centers and assisted living facilities was clearly a priority for the city of Tallahassee. After Hurricane Hermine in 2016, we asked for a meeting with the city's key leaders to debrief together in anticipation of another storm. Several meetings were held post-storm as we worked together toward better preparation and systems targeting nursing centers and other healthcare facilities. This year, city officials asked to meet with us pre-storm to discuss strategies in place and to introduce us to the key players for any concern for nursing centers and healthcare facilities. I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank the city manager, the commissioners, and all the city officials for your concern. Thank you so much. What a difference it made for our local centers and their residents. There are seven nursing centers in Leon County, including the TMH Rehabilitation Center. All facilities were monitored not only by us but also by the city's team. We're pleased to report that while we've got a lot of trees, there were power outages for these facilities, they came back online quicker than during Hermine and with close communication pre-storm, during the storm, and now while we're in recovery stage. All nursing centers have restored power, the last one coming online Saturday. The six nursing centers in Leon County provide care for 831 residents and patients, almost 1,000 people, some of the sickest and fraillest and most elderly, some of our greatest generations that we take care of. And now they're also caring for several hundred people who were evacuated from the panhandle that suffered that devastation. The 16 assisted living facilities in Leon County provide care for 1,700, I'm sorry, 1,173 residents, and it's not over yet. As our healthcare facilities in surrounding counties are still in critical need, many of our local centers continue to receive evacuees from coastal counties. Plus, others are discharged from our hospitals so that the hospitals can make room for beds for our community needs. Individual special needs shelters may also have been evacuated to local centers. The concern now is for the staff of these care centers who, they've got to be really exhausted right now. They are exhibiting extraordinary efforts to care for these residents and evacuees while also taking care of their own personal needs. Tomorrow, we'll be leading a caravan to Marianna, to Bluntstown, and to Panama City with special, with anything that we can bring, water, diapers, whatever, for our residents and our employees of our nursing centers. We appreciate the continued dialogue with the city and for recognizing the needs of our nursing centers and keeping our residents safe and well cared for, not just during a hurricane emergency but also year-round. Thank you for your care, your collaboration, and your attention before, during, and after the storm.
Thank you very much, Emmett. Jeremy Cohen and then Eric Little.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Cohen, 2275 Trescott Drive, and I'm here to talk about the hurricane impact and recovery. Personally, we got our power back Friday evening, thankfully no impact on the house, and most importantly to my daughters, we had internet back Sunday afternoon, so we were happy with that. But I'm here as a small business owner. My wife and I own Target Copier, Target Print and Mail, and we have 30 employees in two locations. And, you know, as the storm was bearing down, we were nervous about the impact, nervous about our ability to open our doors on Friday morning. We let everybody out Wednesday, and, or sorry, Tuesday, we said we closed Wednesday and Thursday, we were hoping to be open on Friday. And, you know, and having 30 employees, if they're not working, they're not earning an income, right? And as a disaster strikes, then it's more critical than ever for them to be able to be compensated, obviously. And so we were nervous as it came in stronger than expected. We were tracking the power at our locations and still had a power Thursday evening, but we were thrilled to find Friday morning that we were able to be open for business, opened doors of both our Tennessee Street location and our Industrial Plaza Drive location. 30 employees able to go to work. We were able to bring in projects, including we did, I think, 15,000 flyers, disaster relief flyers for the Red Cross Friday morning that we delivered out Friday afternoon. And none of that would have been possible if not for the hard work of the city of Tallahassee and the line workers, utility workers. And so on behalf of my business and the family, families of the employees of Target Print and Mail, just wanted to say a sincere thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Eric Little. And Mayor, we've used about 20 minutes of our time. We've got, continued to have names brought, so I'll encourage people to just manage their time if they will. Go right ahead.
Thank you to Honorable Mayor Gillum and the Commission. I'm Eric Little, the Executive Director of the ALife Recovery Center here in Tallahassee, Florida. And at the risk of sounding redundant, I too wanted to say thank you. Thank you on behalf of our Senior Minister of Bethel AME Church, the parent organization, and also to say thank you from a personal level. And the reason it's so personal is because the night of the storm, we were making preparations to transport our clients, because we have a residential facility. We were making preparations to transport our clients to one of those schools that Mr. Hanna talked about for a safe refuge. But Thursday night, my office manager texted me and said that our power was back on, and I couldn't believe it, but I was grateful because of the safety, for the safety of the men and women in recovery at our center. On a personal note, I traveled west to Marianna, Florida, where my daughter lived, and fortunately she survived. She spent 24 hours in her bathtub as the storm passed over, but she survived and her infant child. But as I traveled west, I was impressed and overwhelmed by the nature of the devastation that the people west of us experienced. And that simply made me more grateful for the efforts that you, Mayor and the Commission, put forth to make sure we had power and lights and that the people of Tallahassee were safe. So on behalf of ALRC, myself, and Bethel AME Church, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill Wilson is the next speaker. Bill Wilson. There he is. Coming forward, and he'll be followed by Allison Tant Richards.
Bill Wilson, 1816 Old Ford Drive. Y'all mostly know me from my work in the affordable housing world, but in the real world where I make a little money in the performance improvement and system improvement business. And seeing the difference between the last hurricane and this one was pretty impressive from a performance improvement point of view. And just want to thank you all and Rob and his crew for the job they did in the planning and the shifts and how we approach things. And I stand ready to work with the other affordable housing folks in town because we know we're going to have a load of low-income people who are going to be in need, and we're going to have to find some new strategies and new ways to get them back into safe and affordable housing. So we'll be working with you over the next few weeks.
Thank you, Bill. Allison Tant Richards, she'll be followed by Stanley Sims.
Hey there, I'm Allison Tant, Richard, whatever my name is. I am the mother of a child with disabilities, and I want to tell you that we are very grateful that the school system gave us such notice about the storm so that we could prepare. As a parent of a child with special needs, you have to give them a framework. And so being able to prepare him and to manage his anxiety is difficult for people who are parents of people with disabilities. But you guys did such a great job with that and gave us a peace of mind knowing that when we needed to leave town, when we needed to get back, when we needed to do, we didn't have power, and we had to manage his anxiety about that, which is unrelated to anything but being able to get on the internet for this guy and coolness. But I said to him, like I've said to others, you have a right to be grumpy, you don't have a right to be selfish, which is what I said to him multiple times. So I want to, as you know, I'm going to be coming to you later about, you know, a whole community for people with disabilities, but I wanted to say specifically, thank you for managing this crisis in our community. This was the biggest storm, what, since, I put up there for a long time, and somebody said it was actually 1856. So this is the biggest storm in 100 years or so, pardon my math. And we have power back within a week of the biggest storm since 1856. That is amazing, and that is a testament to the work that you all did to prepare us. I saw linemen out working on lines before the storm even hit. It is a testament to the transparency for being able to share information for people like me to be able to see whether, you know, I was sitting at my own home or sitting in someone else's on my, luckily on my handheld device, what was going on. You were responsive, conscientious. I've been all over Florida, I will say that. I've been everywhere, and Tallahassee is a remarkable, remarkable community. And it's led by, I think, remarkable people who have done their very best for every citizen in this state. And I know sometimes you don't get to hear that, but the preparation that you did and the logistics you managed, bringing all the linemen in, I just can't say thank you enough. It's been a rough week for everybody, we're all exhausted, especially Scott. We're all exhausted, and it's been a thing, but as I said, we all can be grumpy but we can't be selfish. And when we look to the west, we are so lucky, we dodged a bullet. And I know that's because of the efforts that you put in and also the hand of God. So I want to also say one last little thing, and that is Amber's been doing an amazing job putting people first, and with your help, putting people first. And also Kathleen Brennan, who's speaking tonight, her father just passed away, and that her commitment to this community for her to be here tonight to let you know about this is just a testament to the strength of Tallahassee. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mayor, is Stanley Sims, speaking on item 1302, which is your South Side Investment Agenda item.
Hey, Mayor, I just want to say, I have a short testimony of water. My mom, who is surviving cancer, had to transition from Havana to me because of the great work of city employees. We got power back in the Buck Lake era Thursday night. And it was just really very frustrating because my nephew broke the tank on my bathroom that my mother needed to use, so I needed to get a water tank for the bathroom. And on the way to the Wallo's, to the water tank, my truck ran hot. This is a water story, so you got to follow the water story. So the truck ran hot, I got the tank from Lo's, some guy who I don't even know brought me water to put in the truck to get the truck to the house, because some guy who I don't even know found a plumber to replace the toilet so my mom could sit there. Then I got to the corner of Dempsey Mayo, that water went all out of the truck, so I'm stuck there on Dempsey Mayo, and it's very frustrating trying to call a tow truck when you've got citizens continuously stopping, asking you, how can I help you? So I finally just stopped trying to call the tow truck and just dealt with these citizens who just really wanted to help me. And so I got the toilet back onto the house and it replaced. Got there, lice is on, got my mom, she's situated, she needed water because Buck Lake was under a water boar thing. And humble is the way. And I called Ms. Barbara and said, Ms. Barbara, because my mom is currently fighting cancer, I got to be super careful. My number one priority is water because I just can't risk any infection. And God is a waymaker. In the midst of a storm, I met this lady, I don't even know her name, in a city truck. She found me some water. And Mayor, I didn't want to be greedy because she has six cases. And so I got two, waiting on her to say, you know, thank you, goodbye. And so when I saw she wasn't saying nothing, so I kind of walked on over there as if I was going to get two more. And so she said, you need two more? I said, yeah. So I gave her a hug, and she said, if you need anything, you let me know. I said, I really need them two in there. And she said, get them. Water is essential. Not going to talk about the South Side. The Bible says that everlasting water is red here in this city, and I've experienced it. And for my mom there, who's in Havana, looking at her flowers, she's happy, and she's okay. And that's because city manager go, you've got some awesome people working for you, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Reverend Lee Johnson, and then there are two speakers following him, Dot Edmond Johnson and Reverend Anton Elman.
I think, Dot, and I could share three minutes. Dot, and I could share three minutes. Yeah. I'm Pastor Lee Johnson, my wife, Dot, you know, 2121 Trescott Drive. Let me be real brief, I pastor Love by Jesus Family Church, you know, and I wanted to speak on behalf of the residents, 1,100 members that I have in the Orange Avenue Housing Authority, and they wanted me to let you know how appreciative they are of the team that we have here in the city. And you guys have definitely restored trust back into the community. And this last thing before my wife nudges me again, every team has an MVP, and your MVP, our MVP, is Scott Maddox, you know, because he really, really, you know, like, worked his butt off. I thank you, and I thank all of you.
Dot Edmond Johnson, 2121 Trescott Drive, and I just would like to say to the mayor and the city commission, thank you for an outstanding job. Mayor Gillum, in the late 80s... Mayor Gillum, in the late '80s, I sat in your seat when I think it was Kate came through. And I know how hard the job is that you just did with finesse. And the first thing I want to say after thanking you, or I should have said before thanking you, is thank God that that storm did not make a direct hit on Tallahassee as it was projected to do. We are all blessed that we had a few trees to fall, and our power was out, and we were inconvenienced for a few days. But our neighbors to our west are living in splinters. And people from... And what I really want to talk about is how people came together. People came together in our community and communities all around to help each other. They were their brothers and sisters' keepers. And I want to thank personally Lakey Love, the Poor People's Campaign, National Action Network, and many local restaurants that called us up even when we were in Atlanta and said, "Reverend Johnson, Mrs. Johnson, where do people need food?" And all the way from Atlanta, we were coordinating feeding programs in the Orange Avenue Housing Development because of these wonderful people. And all day Sunday, my husband and I were there feeding, providing meals to families in the Orange Avenue Projects where we hold services once we returned to town. And the final thing I want to say is, there are young, black teenagers in that housing development that get short shift because of the way they dress or who they are. And when we were out there on Sunday handing out meals, we had young, black teenagers come over and take over the coordination for us. All we had to do was stand back and supervise. And those young people showed talent of leadership and coordination that any employer would be proud to have. Thank you, City of Tallahassee, for the wonderful job you did, and thank you for showing the rest of the community how we come together and be our best in times of storm.
Anton Elwood. And Mayor, that's the last speaker we have for this part of the meeting.
Anton Elwood, 2773, Juliana Lane, Senior Pastor of the New Mount Zion AME Church in, right here in Tallahassee. I'm not going to apologize for being redundant because when it comes to complaints, nobody ever apologizes for being redundant. I'm going to piggyback off of everything that was said today on behalf of the faith leaders in this community, to Mayor Gillum and to the members of the Commission. Thank you so much for your diligence in helping us serve our people. It is so important, and especially in times like this during a storm, information is so key. Our members, our constituents, those that are part of our congregations, often look to us for information. They want to know. They call the pastor, they want to know what the church has to say. And so we were able to, because of conference calls, because of the information that was disseminated on social media, we were able to give accurate information to our congregations throughout the city, and we are grateful for that. There are a number of other pastors that I see that have gathered here and other faith leaders that are here. We are extremely grateful. And on a personal note, there is nothing like having to have a worship experience in the dark. We've been there before. We've had to have worship experience in the dark without an air conditioner, clapping our hands in the old-time way. But I can say that on Saturday at about 1:00, speaking for the New Mount Zion Church, our power was restored. And our members were so wonderfully blessed to be able to come and share in a hot breakfast and also a worship experience. Sometimes you never miss AC until you don't have it, especially in times like these. And so, again, we're just grateful and blessed that you all were able to help us, to give information to our people, good, strong, accurate information that was able to be a blessing. So we thank you all so much.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
That's the last speaker.
All right, great. Thank you all for taking time and bringing those testimonials here. We will have an update for the community here in just a short while, but the theme that certainly was resonant through everybody's comments was how a community responsibly responds to times of disaster, and we came together. We've all used the term tally strong, but we saw it on full display this past week, and we're thankful for each of you for helping us realize that. Commissioners, we're now at the point in the meeting where we will adjourn as the City Commission and reconvene as the Thinking Fund. So if the members of the Thinking Fund could join us here at the dais, we'll reconvene
I've got to be in the middle of the two of you so you don't find...
All right. The Commission sometimes convenes with our additional three colleagues to review and update various policies as it relates to the city's retirement. I want to now turn over the microphone to the Treasurer Clerk, who will walk us through our agenda today as a Thinking Fund.
Thank you, Mayor. Do appreciate your attention to this matter. As I told a couple of you when we were briefing on this item, this item is not as urgent and pressing as the matters we've just discussed and will discuss further. And I want to echo the comments of the citizens. As a resident, I appreciate the work that our electric utility, underground utility, and other folks did, and also appreciate the fact that we're able to have this meeting as regularly scheduled and go about our usual business. This item that we're bringing tonight concerns City Commission Policy 236, which is our pension investment policy. That item guides the asset allocations we make, targets and that sort of thing for the investment classes for our city pension plan. When we do that, we convene as the Thinking Fund Commission. I want to be sure I introduce the three citizens who make up the Investment Advisory Committee that meet with us on a quarterly basis so that we're meeting continuously on these matters. But when the policy gets changed, we come to you. Sitting most close to the mayor is Bill Christensen. Next to him is Nan Helles, and then Mike Stalick. We appreciate their service. Each of them serves a three-year term and has an opportunity, as most of our citizen boards, to serve a second term, so we appreciate their service. Just introducing the item very quickly. Every three to five years, our investment consultant works with us to evaluate our asset allocation, determine the appropriate places to place our city investments. We've gone through that process. They brought a report in May. We've met with the three citizens here, your Investment Advisory Committee, at least twice, maybe three times, bringing that forward. There are two categories of changes in what's being presented. One is an actual asset allocation. We have, we're recommending the addition of private credit as an asset class. It's a 5% allocation, so what that essentially told me is that our position was a good one. A small tweak here to add private credit, we think, will be of benefit. The other changes that are there are largely to streamline and update the language in the policy, to reflect current practice, to, again, streamline a couple of items that had become voluminous and wordy but could be condensed. And so that's the item that's before you. With that, I'll stop and see...
Staff recommendations?
Second.
There's a motion and a second around staff recommendation. Any comments, questions from the committee? I want to thank our more regular Thinking Fund members for the advisory job that you all do on a regular basis that makes these items much more manageable once it gets to this meeting. There is a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. We will now adjourn as a Thinking Fund and will reconvene as a regular City Commission.
Move consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Mike, Nan, and Bill, thank you very much.
Second.
There is a motion and a second on consent. If there are no questions, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. There was one item that was pulled from consent. That's item 10.01.
Mr. Mayor, that was me that pulled it. One of the roofers that are listed in item 10.01, previously item 9.06, has repaired my roof in the past, and my family has a hole in the roof now. So in an abundance of caution, I'm going to declare a conflict and not vote on the item.
Is there a motion on the item?
So move.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes four to zero. Commissioner Scott Maddox abstaining. We're now on City Commission Items 11.01. This will be an update. Allison Ferris, I believe you're on deck to make that presentation.
Good afternoon. Mayor Gillum, Commissioners, and audience members. My name is Andrea Jones, and I'm the past Vice Chair of the Commission for the Status of Women and Girls, and I am honored to stand before you on behalf of this commission. As, okay, wait, oop, it's this. As many of you know, the CSWG is a citizens advisory commission whose purpose is to promote awareness of issues pertaining to more than half of this community and to serve in an advisory role to provide input to the city and the county commission as needed. This advisory committee is comprised of 21 volunteers, and collectively, we have worked approximately 1,500 hours this year. Utilizing the work of the past commissioners, the committee structure has been changed to better focus on main issues that face women and girls and to be more responsive to the city and county commissions. The 2017, 2018 CSWG committees are as follows: Health and Development, STEM, Economic Security, Violence and Safety, and Organizational Bylaws. Within this report, the Commission is pleased to share research and work that was conducted in the past year. This work is related to various issues affecting women and girls and the impacts within our community. As a follow-up to the 2014, 2015 CSW-published report and the international conversation on sexual violence, the CSWG hosted a hashtag Me Too Community Conversation and Survey. Through conversation and data collection, this event has and will continue to help us understand the sexual violence issues and how they affect women and girls. Likewise, to better understand the economic insecurity effect on women in this area, the CSWG hosted a public hearing at the Jack McLean Community Center. Our collaborative efforts with the Tallahassee Leon Federal Credit Union and the Oasis Center for Women and Girls has allowed us to present and collect data related to financial well-being of women. Throughout the year, the CSWG has worked to accomplish the goals and initiatives by the Strategic Planning Working Group. In summary, these initiatives focus on improving the CSWG's ability to respond to ongoing and immediate issues, create a structure within the commission that ensures that goals are met and accomplished, and the creating and adopting of a multi-year strategic plan. We wish to thank the members of this working group for their hard work. Looking forward, in 2019, a community event will be, is planned and to discuss and raise further awareness regarding the economic security and the three-year strategic plan completion is anticipated. The new Chair and Vice Chair, Gina Giacomo, and Liz Jackelbowski are powerhouses in their respected fields and their community. We are encouraged and look forward to the progress under their leadership. We wish to thank Mayor Gillum and the Commissioners for their continued support, and we look forward to the acceptance of this report. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Andrea. Really appreciate that.
Move acceptance of the report, Mr. Mayor.
Move acceptance.
There is a motion and a second. Commissioner Miller, anything? No, you're pictured here.
Well, and I'm really relieved. I mean, I know that Commissioner Richardson has really stepped up in his beginning to, we're transitioning from my participation to his, and I know that this was a good place for him to start and for you all to orient him on everything that you're doing and get him really deeply involved.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, as always, you all do an impeccable job with the data collection. You hold the mirror up to the community, even for things we don't want to have to face. You all put it in there, and it's extremely helpful to us as we guide the community through some of the policy decisions here.
Well, we could not do that without the support of the city and the county commission. Thank you.
Indeed, thank you. Commissioners, there is a motion.
Mayor, could the members that are in present of the members of the commission's family...
Please, Ms. Jones, there...
There are a few. We actually have several committee meetings going on right now. So we have the Vice Chair, Gina Giacomo. I saw Amber was here as well, and there was someone else here from the commission, but I think they had to leave.
Okay. If you were a member of the commission, would you mind just standing where you are? And we'll...
Do it again.
Madam Vice Chair, thank you very much. Madam Chair, rather. There is a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes four to zero. Commissioner Maddox out of chamber. Commissioners, we're now at item 11.02, Appointment of the Airport Advisor.
Move acceptance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the appointment. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes four to zero. Commissioners, we're now on Introduction of Ordinance, 12.01, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 18-0-25, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 10 zoning of the Tallahassee Land Development Code, eliminating automated car washes as a principal permitted use in the central urban CU-45 zoning district, providing for conflict, separability, and effective date. The first public hearing is scheduled for December 5, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for January 30, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Thank you. Show the ordinance introduced. Commissioners, we're now on to item 13.01, Storm Update, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, I'm going to just provide a brief overview, if you don't mind. And in fact, you've heard a lot about this past week from the earlier presenters. I think they probably did a good job characterizing the gravity of the situation and I think ultimately the response. And then I'm going to turn it over to Rob McGarry to give us a little deeper dive than I'll give because I want to focus on a theme that I think we saw, is that the planning was good, and not just on behalf of the city, but on behalf of the entire community. And I think it reflected the preparedness of the community. We understood how impactful the storm could be. In fact, it was a little frightening at times when we saw Hurricane Michael growing in strength rapidly, almost exponentially. And so I want to feature that because I think those are things that we can be proud of as a community and lessons that we can, that we reflected, we learned, and we can continue to improve upon. And then I'd also like to mention, I think the communication effort, the collective communication effort, was very, very good. I continued to get that feedback from everyone, that they felt informed, they felt armed with the information they needed to make decisions so that we could move forward and deal with the evolving events of the hurricane. So, you know, I look back at my notes because this past week or 10 days feels like a year, I think, frankly. Frankly, I'm not, I'm certain I don't know what day it is, other than it's Wednesday, it's a commission meeting day, but they, they've all run together. And so I looked back at my notes today, and I, and I recognized that this storm was on our radar Friday, October 5. This storm was not even a storm. It was, it was a disturbance at best near Central America, with the possibility of moving northward, because we had a high-pressure ridge on the east coast of the United States that made it really, really hot in Tallahassee, if we remember. And, and the intersection of a cold front and a high-pressure ridge could potentially steer a storm to Tallahassee. And so we started watching it, and all of our departments started communicating with their employees. That was Friday. They started doing that and just getting prepared with no idea of how big the storm could be. And then even by Sunday afternoon, there was a 50% to 60% chance of tropical storm-force winds. I think we would have taken that at this point. And Rob McGarrett and his electric team called upon for 180 mutual aid resources based on that forecast, extra beyond what we have. And we started communicating with our citizens via email and, and social media, saying, be prepared. In fact, I've gotten the feedback that on Sunday, some said, hey, I didn't know there was a storm out there. I think we heard from Superintendent Hannah earlier, the same thing, is that, you know, the weekend was great, and we were looking forward to fall weather, and, and no one's thinking of a potential of a hurricane in, in October, but it was coming, and we, and we know that. By Monday, forecasters were saying it was going to be a category three storm. And Mr. Mayor, I don't know if it was Monday or Tuesday, again, the days have run together. Every time you and I talked, the category of storm went up. I, I think you thought I was making the numbers up, because we said it's a three, the next time we talked, it was a four, and then we said it may even be a five, and that was kind of the, the story of the day. And with that increase in projection, we were ramping up rapidly our preparation. We understood the potential impact of Tallahassee and had called upon even more mutual aid partners. And I, and I was going to recognize her later, but I want to say it at this point. Amy Zuble is in the audience. Amy, if you'd wave your hand. Amy is our director of the Florida Municipal Electric Association, and the municipal utilities in Florida serve 25% of Florida's population, with 35 utilities around the state, and we have a very strong network to support each other, to come to each other's aid in times like this. And not only just in Florida, we're part of the American Public Power Association that has over 2,000 utilities in the United States, and I think Amy might have called all of them, frankly. Ultimately, the mutual aid that we got, and Rob will touch on this, but I don't think we can underscore it enough, we received aid from more than 40 cities around the United States. That was from 15 states. I was out in the field later in the week, and there was, there was a mixture of crews. I could tell they were from different cities. Our, our crews were not there, because they were managing many crews at once. That's how far leveraged we were in terms of our health. And, and I got out of the truck, and they were, they were in Myers Park, and they had a very precarious situation with trees and poles, and it was difficult at best, complicated, I think, would be the best word. And I approached the foreman clearly on the job, and I introduced myself, and, and he started to speak with a heavy New England accent, and I said, I don't think you're from around here. And he said he was from Boston, Massachusetts. Boston, Massachusetts, all the way down here to Tallahassee to help us put our power back together. It was a very comforting feeling that we had that many friends that, that came to our aid, and we did that very early in the process, so I'd like to underscore that planning piece of it. So that, that was in the midst of the storm, but to go back in timeline, Monday was a day of preparation, final preparation, announcements about schools and offices were, were happening so we could make our final preparations and people could be prepared, and I think our message of, of take cover, if you will, be safe. Mr. Mayor, you know, we talked about the idea that, that we were worried about our community's safety. It was beyond the impact of, of just power going out, but can we remain safe? Will, will, will there be no injuries from this storm? And I think we've learned that it was a powerful storm, and, and there's many fatalities associated with it, and, and I'm, I'm so proud to report that there were no serious injuries. So the, the storm hit, Hurricane Michael made landfall somewhere around 2:00 PM Eastern Time on Wednesday, and it peaked in Tallahassee early that evening. And then, as you know, winds lasted into the evening, into the dark hours, and, and once it subsided, we were able to get out there and make an assessment and start getting reports from our emergency responders and no reports of serious injury, and that was, that was top of the list. And I, I think that was so important to so many of us, that there were no injuries, because we knew we could put the city back together, and, and, but no one got hurt, no, no serious injuries, and so we, we celebrated that. But there were, we did not waste time to begin the restoration process. It began overnight, that night, and then really picked up steam that morning as, as, as we saw light, and hundreds and hundreds, ultimately more than 800, were our workers combined, and the mutual aid folks went out rapidly, and you already heard tonight, power started returning to our city on Thursday. As we started that day, though, 90%, more than 90% of our businesses and homes were in the dark. I don't think we've ever seen anything like that in Tallahassee. We know the storm was powerful. I cannot find any records that indicate that anything had ever impacted us that much, and so it was an undertaking that we've never seen. And we, and we immediately began dealing with that. Even in the midst of the storm, as it, as the wind was blowing and outages were happening, our crews worked diligently to restore power before it got too bad to, to seek shelter. And they were, they were outages. They were outages, and they were restored. And we were fixing the city before it got too bad. Something that stands out in my mind is, and I've lost track of the time, maybe 3:00 in the afternoon, but the winds were getting high. They weren't high enough to pull our crews down, but they were dangerous. And we learned a pump station 94 in the Summerbrook area had failed. It had lost grid power, and it has a backup generator. It is a very well-designed system, but the backup generator had failed, and our, our telemetry was telling us that. I talked to Jen Porter, our general manager of our underground utilities, and she said, Reese, we're ready to go. We've got a pump. Do you want us to go? And I said, if the men feel safe, send them. It wasn't yet at that point where we were standing down, and she called me, and she said, Reese, the men have had to abandon their truck, because the winds were too high, and they literally left it on the side of the road. They, they made every attempt to, to get there, but they just couldn't reach it before the winds got too high, and then, and they took shelter. They ended up in, in Charles High School to take shelter in the, in the safest location. But as soon as the winds died down, they returned to get that pump station back in order. So that was kind of indicative of the, the storm, how, you know, they, they fought until they, they couldn't fight and stood down, is that regard. So, and then the storm cleared, and what we know now is thousands of trees were down throughout our community. The report I have now is more than 1,000 buildings have been damaged. Roads, actually, we had 1,000-plus tickets for blocked roads that were cleared very quickly, very, very quickly. And again, I said 90% of the city's power was, more than 90% of the power was out, in a similar impact to our, our water and wastewater system. And it doesn't work well without electricity, by the way. It depends upon electricity, but we have some really, really professional and capable staff to keep that going. They have strategically located backup pumps to keep the flow going, and they did. We never had an issue with our potable water system, which I think we all learn now, water is so essential. If you lose water, that's a problem. They kept it going, and they just kept that thing going until Rob McGarrett and his team could stand up enough electricity to, to have it operating normally. So that, those were things we could be proud of. We had pre-positioned traffic generators at select traffic intersections. We didn't have enough to do all of them. We have about 400 or so intersections with signals in the city system, and so we had pre-staged generators to make sure when the, we knew the power was going to go out at that point, when it did that, if there were people on the road, that they would not be in danger. And those crews had to then go out and start the generators and refuel the generators, and you're talking about a big task. By the way, you have to refuel those every five hours. They don't just take one, one tank of gas and run for a very long time, so they were constantly running around. We eventually expanded that entire network to have all the traffic signals working well. In fact, that was happening by the end of the day Thursday, and people were out on the road and starting to enjoy the weather, and even though the power was down, people could get out of their home, and we had cleared so many roads that they could move around, and that was good. I, I hit a couple more points and asked Rob to come up, but we were in strong communication with our nursing homes and assisted living facilities. We were in strong communication with our neighborhoods, because we knew they would be our networks. We, we talked to them about checking on their neighbors, so that we would know where the pressure points, where we could take care of those that may need power, that would otherwise live independently, perfectly fine, but that would need power. We worked to stand up comfort stations. Ultimately, we stood up six comfort stations in our community recreation centers. Our customer contact group went 24 hours a day and, and just really kept the information flowing to our community, and power restoration was, was quick to happen. Our community came together, they, a number of folks started hosting lunches and meals. I've got notes of New Hope International Outreach hosted a meal, Tabernacle of Praise hosted a meal, Friendship Baptist Church did, many, many more. I've got a note that at Walker Ford, we had a meal hosted by Kim Cuisine and Right On BBQ. That's what I'm talking about, Right On, right? Right On. And there's many, many more. And so those things were happening, and I talk about community preparedness. I think that was evident, that we came together in, in that regard. And then we, as you know, the electric utility set a very aggressive goal, a very aggressive goal, restoring 90% of power by the end of the weekend. In fact, I wasn't really sure that could happen, to be honest with you, but they, and we've got the gentleman.
Actually, his direct quote was, when I asked him about the 90%, you know, how you, how do you feel about it, Reese? He says, Mayor, I'm, I'm more nervous than a cat in a room full of rocking chairs. Never heard that before, but.
You know what it means, sir.
A long-tailed cat.
Yeah. Exactly. And we've got the architects of that plan in the back, and, and they had confidence. They had confidence, and what followed with that was a confidence that we could get our schools back online, so that by Monday, this was on Friday, I believe that was, to give the superintendent, and he and I talked, and I know he talked to you, and he was, he was making sure that we were confident, and, and I had confidence in the team. I really had confidence in the team, their professionalism, their approach, their dedication, that we were going to be back to normal on Monday, while it did not feel very normal on Friday, that we would reach normalcy Monday, and then, and then, and put the rest of the community back together as we move forward. And so we put that out there, we put that out there to the community, and they delivered. And they delivered. I mean, just nailed it. And, and we knew that that didn't mean we were done. That was just a milestone. That was a milestone that we could project to the community to say, we know we'll be a long way done by the end of the weekend, which was just incredulous when we started the, the effort. And so, you know, that work is, is finishing as we speak. We're down to very few outages at this point, and, and the line men are out there as we speak, working, making those final repairs, so that our city can be completely back to normal over the, over the next coming weeks. We're going to be picking up debris. So, at this point, our curbs are essentially tree trunks. They used to be concrete, now they're just lined with trees. More tree debris than I think we could probably ever imagine, and we're going to pick it up. Reginald O'Fonny and his team will, will be, and they're already out there. They picked up more than 1,000 tons of, of debris at this point, and going and counting, and so we're encouraging our residents to go ahead and put your debris by the curb. Don't burn it, put it by the curb, and we're going to come by and pick it, and we're going to pick it up, and in the coming weeks, we'll make Tallahassee as beautiful as it's ever been. We will not let debris stay on our roadways, and so we'll be back to normal, we'll feel back to normal when we, when we get there. And, and you know that we've been talking about, but we're looking forward, we want to help our neighbors that have been damaged more. Tallahassee Fire Department has already sent resources, and it have been on the grounds for several days in Gulf County and then in Sneed's yesterday, probably have moved somewhere else at this point. It's a very dynamic process. Our underground utilities, once their system got restored, were dispatched to Port St. Joe and Panama City. And our airport clearly is hosting a very big base camp for FEMA workers and emergency workers, because Tallahassee is the epicenter for the logistics of this operation in our region, and we're proud to host that. So, you know, we want to, we want to look forward and understand the impact, not just us, but to the region. And, and so I'm going to bring Rob up. Before I do, though. I'm not really messing with him. Before I do, I can't tell you how many city employees pledged their work in this. I'll, I'll figure it out at some point, but thousands, thousands, and they sacrificed their own personal comfort and the ability to evacuate and take care of their families, and they were here taking care of our community, and I've asked just some of them to come tonight. A lot of them are still working, and some of them didn't want to come, because they were busy and wanted to do it, but I've asked them to be here, and if I could, if, if you could indulge me, the city workers that are here, those that participated in the, in the effort, I can't recognize you individually, I wish I could, and you mean so much to me, but if, can you stand up and let us recognize you for a job well done?
Mr. Manager, if I might, we also need to look back and recall that just not very long ago, we dispatched crews to the Dominican Republic. So those folk had just provided services in the Caribbean to those who were, were in need as well, so.
It certainly is a spirit of helping. We've got a great community, and I think it breathes that spirit, and, and I didn't want to steal Rob's thunder, but there's so many people that have helped in so many different facets of our organization. I recognized Amy earlier, and I'd like to thank her for what she did for us, and she continues to do that for our cities of Quincy and Havana and Chattahoochee and Bluntstown. It's a, it's a family network, and we, we've pledged our support for them, too. Superintendent Hannah was here earlier, and we talked, and I appreciate his leadership, and Director Reed from the Healthcare Association was here as well, and, and somebody that's, that's helping us as we speak, Mr. Nicholas, would you stand up and wave your hand? Randy Nicholas from Big Ben 211. Thank you for being here, sir. Big Ben 211 is a lifeline for our community, those that we know that this isn't over. Some need help, they need assistance, and Big Ben 211 is, is a wonderful resource. Just dial 211 if you need help, if you need assistance, and there are clearinghouse to connect, and I appreciate you being here, and obviously, we heard from the FEMA representatives earlier, as, as I know our community will need help, not just the public assistance for what the governments are spending, but the individuals that have been impacted in this. So I was very, very pleased to learn that we, we have been designated for that individual assistance by FEMA. And then, and I think I finally, go ahead and come up, Rob, I keep teasing you, but Rob, Rob is going to give us an update on electric. That's one facet of what we've done, and I think it's completely indicative of what the, the team approach has been. Couldn't be more pleased with the team in, in our planning, preparation, and professionalism. Will you give us an update, please, Rob?
Before I get into the slides, we're down to 318 customers out. I just looked at the OMS a minute ago. As Reese mentioned, we started planning for the storm the weekend before. We activated our storm plan officially on Saturday. I reached out to Amy, and we started talking about bringing in mutual aid resources, with the first set of resources scheduled to come in Tuesday before the storm hit. We've never done that before, but we asked 120 people from other utilities to come ride the storm out in Tallahassee with us, and they did. We brought our tree crews in on Wednesday, and then the second round of mutual aid we asked for started arriving Thursday morning. We actually had them traveling Tuesday and Wednesday to get close to Tallahassee. Because of the path of the storm, there was a number of our mutual aid partners in Georgia and South and North Carolina we couldn't reach out to, because it looked like they were going to get hit. So Amy reached far and wide, and I'll talk about that a little more in a minute, where they came from. While normally, we don't consider this a good thing, it was a good thing for us this time. Unit eight at Purdum tripped offline Friday before the storm with a problem, and then when they started talking storm surges, we just left the unit off, because we evacuated the plant for this, only the second time in the 2019. we evacuated the plant for this, only the second time in the 27 years I've worked for the city because of the threat of storm surge down there. And we were fully in operation storm, storm mode on Tuesday morning. As Reece said, when we woke up or at the end of the storm Wednesday night sometime, and we looked out there, over 90% of our customers were without power. We have 123,000 delivery points, and it was a little more than 113,000 of those delivery points were out of service. 122 of our 165 circuits, the wires that take the power out to customers were out of service. Almost a third of our substations were off. Over half of our transmission system was out of service, including the line that connects us to Southern Company to the north. We had a whopping 70 megawatts of, of load. We would normally be in the 220, 230 megawatts of load at that time of the day. And our traffic management system was on generators or out of service. Fortunately, none of the power plants sustained any damage. We did, when we sent a crew back down Thursday morning to Purdum, we did see indications of the storm surge, but it didn't get into any critical equipment. So by Thursday afternoon, it was ready to come back up. Hopkins ran through the storm. Our two units at the hospital that were in the final stages of commissioning ran the bulk of the storm. We did have a system upset that took them off. It wasn't a problem with them. It was when we lost the tide of Southern Company, it shook the system so bad that it tripped the units offline, which is not unusual. But our guys went out there and got them back ready to go, so. This is a timeline of the restoration. This is 8:00 AM data each morning as we went through the storm. As Reece said, we achieved 90% restoration Sunday night about 9:00 PM. The, it was a very aggressive schedule. The way we did that this time is we brought significant more resources in than we did during Hermine. We had a total of 843 people between my staff and our mutual aid partners out working on the wire side of our business. 430 of those were line workers from 15 states, and actually, it's over 50 cities. We haven't gotten the final count because some of them came as groups, like the New England folks Reece talked about came as a, a group from Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island. But we had support from Florida, Indiana, Kentucky, Louisiana, Mississippi, Missouri, Arkansas, Nebraska, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island, Ohio, Oklahoma, Tennessee, and Texas. And they brought a total of 430 resources between that. We did have one investor-owned utility, TECO, out of Tampa, that pledged some crews to us, and one contractor. We also brought in a bunch of extra tree crews from Asplin and Wolf, a total of about 266 additional folks to help us because we knew it was going to be a tree event, and then our 147 personnel. By the time Thursday afternoon came, we were putting in about 13,500 man-hours a day out of those 800 folks, 800-plus folks working 16-hour days. We had, and this is a preliminary number, we're not done with it yet, with accounting for it, but we, we know we've replaced 267 poles on the system, 214 transformers, a little over five miles of wire. And it's not normal to have to replace a lot of wire with overhead because you normally reuse the wire that's there, but five miles of wire had to be replaced. 2,200 insulators, that's what stands the wire off of the, the poles. And that's sort of just a snapshot of the damage we had. I'm also happy to report that we did all of that work with just a couple minor, one minor medical case accident. One of our mutual aid partners from OUC twisted a knee and had to go home early and a couple small fender benders, but we had no major medical issues. I get the pleasure of standing in front of y'all and talking about our team. I want to introduce some of them. Richard Ash is our Assistant General Manager. If you'll stand up, Richard. For delivery, Jess Gerald is one of our engineer, our operations managers there, and Steve Dotson is one of our line crew supervisors. These are the guys that manage the 843 people. And while our linemen and our field folks get a lot of recognition in these type of events, we couldn't have done it without the ability to house, feed, provide ice, drinks, snacks, and laundry for all of these people. And Karen Webb, Karen Byday is our Compliance Manager. And during storm events, Karen leads our logistics team. The first few days, we were serving, these guys eat a lot, so for 850 people, we were serving about 1,400 meals for breakfast and dinner, and then a bag lunch each day. Once the restaurants opened on Saturday, we let them do lunch and dinner out in the field so they didn't have to come back to our offices. But if you want, ever want to see a controlled chaos, when we, if we ever have to do this again, we fed 850 people in 45 minutes for breakfast every morning at 6 o'clock in the morning. And Karen and the rest of the team that worked there with our logistics and admin, admin team made that, made that happen. We couldn't have done it without Amy. She and I have been talking multiple times a day, every day, and getting the resources here for us. She reached out. All I had to do was call and say, I need help, and I need this many people with this type of equipment. And she got on the phone and found them and called us back and said, they're on their way. And so we have a great mutual aid system within the, the country, and Amy helps us. As Reece said, we're finishing clearing up our system. This morning, we released 80 of our resources from other utilities to go over to Quincy, Blountstown, and Chattahoochee and start helping them rebuild their system. We kept about 50 of those resources to help us do the cleanup work we're in now and then release the rest of our partners. They were made available to the other utilities, but the other utilities felt that they had enough staff right now. As soon as we finish getting the system up to, back up, and my guys have a day or two to rest, we've told Amy Saturday, or Sunday or Monday, we'll be ready to dispatch some of our crew to the west to help relieve some of the folks that have been with us for a week and are going to be ready to go home and get some rest. That'll be helpful because our folks can live at home and eat breakfast and dinner here in Blountstown and Chattahoochee, and Quincy aren't going to have to worry about all of the logistical work. We've already started sending materials. We've told all the utilities to the west of us, any materials that we have that we don't feel like we've got to keep to maintain our system are theirs for the asking, and we've already had a couple of them asked, and we're sending out. So we're getting ready to go west and help our brethren to the west rebuild their systems. So with that, I'll answer any questions y'all might have.
Excellent. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This isn't a question, but I watched you through this whole storm like I watched you through Hermine. And not only have you had to deal with running a department, getting us back on track, but you also had to deal with politics, unfortunately. And you are a fantastic public servant, you and the people that work for you. And Reece Code, there's no doubt, I, I could not be prouder of my vote for you for city manager. You have performed so well, and it, there's a reason why we put somebody with utility expertise in as manager. The entire city staff has done a fantastic job. Commission has worked hard. Everyone has worked hard. And Mr. Mayor, you clearly have things at stake for your own personal benefit, and you put that all aside for us. I can't think of many people that have an opportunity to be governor of the state of Florida and would say, you know what, I'm not going to give that my all because I got a job right here that I'm going to do first. That's tremendous.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo Commissioner Maddox's comments in that, Mr. Manager, I certainly supported you for appointment to that position. But that, the confidence that I had in you then was certainly reaffirmed by the leadership that you showed over these last several days. You have led a team that was the model for the United States of America to emulate, and I say that in all earnest. You know, we, we got a lot of the recognition because we were out there as the policymakers. And Mr. Mayor, you were, you were outstanding, and we applaud you for the leadership that you showed through this. But, but it's the men and women who were out there every day, as you mentioned, Rob, who, like I said, some started back with their service in the Dominican Republic. So they've been doing this for a long time now. They are really due a break. But it, it's those men and women who went out there unselfishly under conditions that probably none of us would have wanted to go out in and didn't go out in. But they were willing to, to leave their families, to provide, families without utilities themselves, some maybe without even water, but they were willing to do that as the true public servants that they are. They were willing to serve this community. And not, they didn't do it just during the five or seven days of this hurricane event or storm event, but they do it 24/7, 365 days of the year. They go unnoticed so many times. You know, we noticed the trucks in the neighborhoods this time around because there were so many of them, and they were from other places, and we were curious as to where all these folk were coming from. But we've got crews, as you mentioned, the number of employees that we have every day that do this for this community on a consistent basis. And, and they go, oftentimes go unnoticed, but they performed superbly. And without them, none of this could have been done. And so we owe them and their families a great deal of gratitude for the work that they've done for this community. Thank you, Mr. Maddox.
Here, here. Commissioner Miller, followed by Commissioner Ziffer.
Well, as someone said earlier, I don't want to be redundant, but honestly, you know, last time, there seemed to be a, we were trying to sort our folks out into all these crews, and the way that you all have figured out a way to have them cover more than one crew at a time and move around, I don't even understand how you're able to move around at all because the streets were so blocked and there was so much, I mean, no traffic signals, no nothing, and hopefully, most of us were staying at home. But I'm speaking for the general Tallahassee people. I can see why you kept pleading with people to please stay home and stay off the streets so everybody could get around. But there have been so many trucks on the road. I wanted to make sure, I'm sure you've done it already, but make sure you have let all these folks from all around the United States know how much we appreciate what they've done. And these guys, thank you for bringing them because without them, none of this would have happened the way it did. And here we sit, a week out from the storm, and we're down to the very, basically where there's some very particular problem with 300 homes where they're still working, I'm sure. So thank you. Also, thanks to Underground Utilities who kept on all the water, kept it running. And thank you to the gas people who were able to keep us with hot water if we happen to have gas. I recommend hot water, gas, I recommend gas, hot water heaters, everybody. But so, so much appreciate all that all of you have done, and I am very, very, very proud to be here and able to, as, as Eileen said, get the key whenever it's really all of you that are working so hard to do all the work. So thank you so much.
Here, here. Ms. Ziff.
Also, I noticed I was the 90% person, our household, at 9:00 on Sunday.
I was 10%.
Echo what everybody said. I also just wanted to, because it's one of our departments that has gone unmentioned, but I also want to thank all of our police officers, men and women that also were out in the field. There was a tree that went down near my home, boy, just at the beginning. And I mean, they were on the spot directing traffic off of Sixth Avenue. So between the first responders, police, fire, EMS, in addition to your whole crew, just an outstanding job. I was, I left here Sunday morning to go to Portland, Oregon for a five-day conference and literally landed. And I think I got a note from Reece saying that we had this storm maybe coming, and I flew back on the red eye the next night and never had a doubt that this city would respond. And I think that's, if I could sum it up, the single greatest difference between this and two years ago is every step of the way, you could clearly tell that you guys, y'all, were in control. Even though Mother Nature was there, we were eventually under, in control because of the work that you had done in advance and preparation. And then to see all these other utilities on the street doing their jobs, it was an honor to be a part of this government during all the time period. So thank you for what you did.
Here, thank you. Commissioner Miller.
I just don't want to, us to stop without a hooray, hurrah for communications because there, if there was a difference between Hermine and now, it was without a doubt communications. I mean, the communication was fast and loose and regular and accurate and pervasive everywhere. What you did with WFASU to embed them in the EOC, so even radio, I mean, it gave us a chance to think about what, how would we communicate if you were in Panama City? They have nothing, no cell phones, and a lot of us had no cell phones for a long time. And nothing, nothing, no water, no sewer, no, no, nothing. What would you do? Well, at least you'd have that radio signal. So the fact that you've even gone to that, it is such a difference than it was two years ago. So, and I know that, I want to commend the city manager for that, too, because, and, and the communications department. But I know he was aware that that needed to change and definitely made the change. The last comment I want to make has to do with the retailers in town. If there, that was another remarkable difference. I mean, Esposito's was getting in a load of generators Tuesday night. Costco was getting in a load of generators Tuesday. I mean, Publix was open on Thursday, every, and half the rest of the, the restaurants, you could actually go and get a meal. If there was one thing I remember from Kate, it was, which is the nearest thing we've had of this, no, there was nowhere to eat. I mean, and you couldn't even go, we were moving, and you couldn't even buy food. And then the electricity was off, and so there was no refrigeration. I mean, it was just, so food actually in Tallahassee was a problem. But this time, plenty of ice, plenty of water, plenty of everything, both before the storm and afterwards. And I think that we, I really want to express my appreciation for all the retailers who really were able to step up, learned from, learned what the needs were, and they had all those supplies ready for us. Thanks.
Thank you. Just a quick moment. One, at least I know three of the five of us up here were part of that final 10%, right, who didn't have power. But it was about 1:30 Sunday morning when I was came back, and I was really tempted to text Commissioner Maddox my address.
That was Monday morning, Mayor. Monday morning.
I saw you collecting addresses. I nearly text your mind to see if you could make a difference. But a lot of people think that we're like the first ones to come, you know, to come back. We're treated less as anybody else is on this system. That's a, you know, a lighthearted, you know, joke, but Rob McGarren, Amy, your coordination on behalf of the municipal electorates, the difference that you all made between this storm, frankly, every storm is an improvement on the other. And that's because we learn new things and systems change. If I had a recommendation for the next one, it would be to make sure, you know, Mr. Manager, that on this next commission that you get, that you put the request in for redundancy on communications. I know you had a worry that 800 megahertz, you know, system may have failed. And the western part, it did fail. Law enforcement couldn't communicate with each other. They were doing runners. And that's not a situation you ever want to find yourself in in the middle of an emergency. There honestly are- There honestly are too many departments to acknowledge and to thank. I'm going to ditto all the other ones that have been called before. I want to add to it, Parks and Recreation, who on, I don't even know what night it was, Saturday night it was, did a movie in the park. Commissioner, you were there. I mean, over 1,000 folks showed up in the park to watch a movie, no warm showers, you know, some free popcorn, and then food trucks. And then they did the same thing with Longest Table the next night. But the quality of life continued in spite of the fact that there were folks who were going through their own, you know, their version of stress. Mr. Manager, I can't, I can't thank you enough for, quite frankly, your unflinching leadership, and take this compliment to you to be a compliment to the entire organization because I think you're at the head, but if the head isn't right, then the body can't do what it needs to do. And so you were right, and you led this organization, I think, with real grace under pressure. Aside from your, you know, cat, you know, and rocking chair thing, I never was nervous about what you, what you said. It took me a minute to process it, but you were right. And you felt that level of confidence because throughout the organization, everything underneath you, you had the confidence in, and you exuded that confidence in the way that you communicated to us and to the community. And so my compliment at this moment is to the manager, but it is to everyone within this organization who works hand in glove with him to make it happen. And I'll add another one, and that is the staffs, administrative staffs across the organizations who were serving meals, you know, they showed up, there were no titles, people just pitched in and did their part. And then lastly, to the community, I didn't see a lot of griping. I mean, I know if you're still one of those who don't have power, you probably are upset right now in your home, and folks are still working on you, nobody's forgotten you. But really, this community responded, they took responsibility, they helped their neighbors, they had the right attitudes, and they made, you know, lemons out of lemonade. And I think that that is a credit to them, and it made getting through this process all the better. And now our attention shifts to our neighbors further to the west. As you all know, if you've been out to the airport, our airport personnel, David Pollak, is making provision, I mean, they were cutting grass yesterday, to build a tent camp of 1,000 people right there on the airport property, near the solar farm. It will house 1,000 vehicles. The old terminal has turned into the logistics center, moving goods and other material out to the west. We said all along, it was important for Tallahassee to get back to 100 so that we could be a good neighbor to those around us, and that's exactly what folks are doing. Chief Gaines, his folks are already, his search and rescue folks are already deployed. There's so much good to really praise at this moment, and so, you know, the only word I have is to simply say thank you. You all did an incredible job. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you and the rest of the commissioners for your leadership. We were in constant communication. You were giving me good support, feedback, vision, and leadership, and I can't thank you enough for that. You talk about my confidence, you had confidence, the rest of the commissioners had confidence. And as we steered through it, we made adjustments, and we took that information, and I appreciate every bit of that leadership that you gave us and the comments that you've made that are so great for our staff. They truly do shed to the entire staff. I wish I could recognize everybody. There was no part of this organization that was not engaged. Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Mayor and commissioners throughout.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
And I know we've got to end this at some point, but I have to indicate the fact that our sister government, Leon County, was right there hand in hand with us. Our county chairman, Nick Maddox, the county administrator, Vince Long, their staffs. I know whenever I was there at the EOC, they were right there. They were out in the community, providing services, communicating with the public. And so we certainly need to give them the recognition that they're due because they were right there with us during the whole time.
Here, here. If there is any one person, department, or individual that we didn't get to name here, charge it to our head and not to our heart, in totality, we really do appreciate the entire organization and the entirety of our human services community that has joined with us in this effort. Commissioners, we're now, unless there are other questions, comments. Amy, anything from you? I only ask because we got two minutes before public hearing.
No, I'm good. I just want to say thank you all. You did an incredible job, and the precedent that you have set across the country to all of the other utilities is a really, really high bar to meet that I don't think they ever will. You guys treated them like rock stars that they were, and they will definitely come back. And so thank you for your hospitality for them. Really, job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. For all the staff that Reese may come here, you all are certainly, I'm sure, free to go if you don't want to have to be here for the rest. Actually, I can't give directives, that's your job.
They're free to go, Mr. Mayor. They've got work to do.
All right. Commissioners, we're now at the, at the point in the meeting where we will hear from the public on public hearings. I'll yield the microphone to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 15.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 18-0-17, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 12-62 of the Code of General Ordinances relating to public safety on roads and medians, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. As you are aware, Mayor and Commissioners, I've spoken to you about this ordinance. Over the last few years, we have had some interpretations that come from the court that have caused me to recommend to you that we update our public road and median ordinance. And the purpose of this item is to present to you an ordinance for adoption that incorporates those recommendations. Today, we have before you Matt Scanlon, who is an attorney in our office, who substantially prepared this ordinance, and he's going to give you a bit of a summary, and then, in order to create the record we need, and then we may have one speaker from, I think, the police, I'm sorry, the fire chief is going to present as well.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. This item before you is an ordinance about public safety on public roads. Common sense and the empirical evidence that we have dictates that interactions between pedestrians and vehicles that are actually in traffic are obviously dangerous. It should be limited as much as possible. The courts of the United States and in Florida have recognized that municipalities have a significant and legitimate interest in protecting public safety and promoting the free flow of traffic, which is what we're trying to do here. The reason this interest exists is obvious, it's because interactions between pedestrians and vehicles are dangerous, not only to the pedestrian, but also to the drivers and the traffic and the free flow of traffic. At best, these interactions cause delays, distractions, and near misses, and at worst, they cause, obviously, traffic accidents and injuries and death. TPD has provided information to us that they've had 675 traffic incidences, incidents involving pedestrians in the last five years. Vast majority of those involved vehicles that were in traffic. That's what we're trying to prevent here. Over the years, there have been numerous calls to our office and to your offices, I believe, letting us know about folks that are acting unsafe in streets and what can we do about it. This is an attempt to try to resolve that problem. In fact, our own fire department, my understanding is, they had to stop their pass-the-boo campaign that they used to do for fundraising because of safety concerns. I think Chief Gaines is going to fill you in on that a little bit, but that is something they had to stop doing because of near misses and some incidents they had. So where we are now, the commission, a couple of years ago, did try to address this issue, and we did pass an ordinance that prohibited certain kinds of activities with traffic. The problem is that since that time, the United States Supreme Court has come up with a decision that's called Reed v. Conne Gilbert, in which they said handling certain kinds of communications differently than others is a problem. In other words, you can't create a system where the police have to determine the message and the content of the message. So what we're trying to do here is come up with an ordinance that protects the safety of pedestrians, protects the safety of drivers, and it also allows folks to have their First Amendment rights to solicit for funds and political purposes and religious purposes and petitions and other items. Our concern is that our current ordinance may run contrary to those decisions, so we're trying to clean it up a little bit. The proposed amendment attempts to fix these concerns because it clarifies that all interactions between pedestrians and vehicles that are in traffic are prohibited. The goal is to have an ordinance that is content neutral, and that provides a lower legal threshold for the ordinance, and we believe this amendment is clearly content neutral. When observing these interactions between pedestrians and vehicles, the officers do not have to examine what the pedestrian and the driver are talking about. It prohibits all interactions between the driver and the pedestrian. The actual language in the ordinance limits physical contact or an exchange of any item with a driver and a pedestrian. This obviously applies the same to the solicitation of money, to advertisements of businesses, asking for charitable donations, handing out religious literature, political messaging, petitions, and any other interactions that may take place between a citizen and a driver. The current ordinance also prohibits holding up any kind of sign in a median, and we kept that provision. That is a reasonable place restriction. It is a distraction to drivers to have folks standing in medians holding signs. But importantly, the ordinance makes it unlawful both for the pedestrian entering the street and the driver that is handing something to the pedestrian, and it applies equally to both because, obviously, if it's unsafe for one, it is unsafe for the other. We believe the amended ordinance does allow folks to express their First Amendment rights in other ways. It allows solicitation of any sorts, as long as you're directing it to folks on the sidewalk. It only applies to vehicles in traffic. Drivers are free to pull over to the side of the road and interact with pedestrians. And any signs are allowed at any time on sidewalks. The concern is the medium holding signs in the median. So basically, we have attempted to clean up an existing ordinance in a manner that strikes a balance between giving law enforcement a tool that they need to ensure safety of drivers and pedestrians, and it still allows folks a leeway to express their First Amendment rights in a safe manner. I think Chief Gaines is going to speak briefly on some problems they've had with their pass-the-boo campaign, and I'll answer any questions after that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. I was asked to speak on this from a public safety perspective, talking to the local union here and even talking to the international union in Washington, D.C. This is something that unions across the country have made the decision to pull back from collecting money on the street, and the reason being, obviously, because there's been incidents that have occurred where firefighters were either injured or they were close to being injured because they were out trying to collect money. So the local union here has made the decision that that is not something they're going to do any longer. And if you've noticed, last year, when they were collecting for MDA, they did it a different way by going to box stores like Publix and standing out front because they see it as a safety hazard. What we realize is that as emergency responders, even while we have all the equipment and protection or to show that we're out there, we have our units and so forth, people are distracted. And given that fact, that we don't feel that it is worth sacrificing anyone's life when it can be avoided. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief.
At this point, we can have public comment, and then if the commissioners have any questions, they can ask questions.
Great, thank you. Any comments?
We have no speakers on 1501.
Right. Questions, comments, both commissioners? There's a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation. If there are no questions, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We're now on to item 15.05.
Thank you. 15, item number 15.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 18-0-29, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the alcoholic beverage code in the Code of General Ordinances, revising Section 3-5 to amend closing hours and hours of service and consumption at alcoholic beverage establishments, providing for increased penalties for violations, providing for conflicts, separability, and effective date. The ordinance that has been presented to you, the proposed ordinance, essentially changes the closing time of alcoholic beverage establishments to 3:00 from 4:00. I have presented two options to you at your request at the last meeting. You requested an option of an ordinance which, as currently drafted, basically says that there will be, you could have no consumption after 2:00 or between 2:00 and 3:00. However, you asked also for an amendment to that that would permit consumption between 2:00 and 3:00, but still maintain those closing hours with the thought that there may be some issue with enforcement if you desire, kept the consumption in.
Commissioner Richardson.
Do you want to have public speakers first, or do you?
You want to?
I have a motion after this.
Okay, great. We'll take public speaking, speakers on the side.
We have two speakers, Mayor. The first is Scott Carswell, then Max Hurley. I feel sure each is well familiar with our three-minute rule.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak. Just want to clear up, although this has been a long issue, I've never had a position on this that was anything but open between everybody in terms of competition. It's never been an issue of restricting in any way. I'm going in over 50 years in private business ownership after getting out of college, and I would never think of anything but everybody using a level playing field. So I want to make sure everybody knows that that's where I've been from 10 years on this issue that has been ongoing. Never been about restricting competition. So I thank Curtis Richardson, Commissioner Richardson, for adding the second part last meeting where it allow us to have the consumption up until 3:00. I know Florida State came in the room, which was a little strange to me from that standpoint because I thought we had an agreement, maybe we do now. But I know, speaking from after FAMU's homecoming with others at FAMU, Dr. Hudson, Police Chief Galloway, and others, that there are more than, there is more than one university in this town, and the moon has always been about everybody coming. We want everybody to come to the moon, just be sure you know when you're coming because you don't know what's coming over there. We're going to do it all for everybody whenever they want it. So people party in different ways. So I think the one shoe fits all might work for FSU in certain places, and it might not work for FAMU, it might not work for TCC. So after the FAMU homecoming week that we've had is a perfect example of why making, going at 2:00 would have been an issue with the thousands of people that we had over the six nights that we had going into the FAMU alumni ball. People were having a great time and was a very successful homecoming. I think the biggest homecoming we've had since I've been doing it for 34 years. So it works for that aspect. If it doesn't work in other regards, I don't think we need one shoe at all. So I appreciate your consideration. I think the community would be better served with a 2:00 a.m., which it always has been, elimination of sales. We've done that for 34 years, I've had a license, and it gives us time then to let people get out of the building. It's impossible to go into the building and take all the drinks and every item out of the building while people are still in it. It's a major security risk, and those have been the majority of my personal injury lawsuits over my 34 years, dealing with that while customers are in the room. So leaving them an hour to get out makes sense to us, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Max Hurley, 117 South Gadsden Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Tallahassee Bar and Hospitality Association. I want to start off by saying thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and Mr. City Manager and Commissioners for your fantastic storm response. I can say that on behalf of the bars and restaurants, we are very grateful for having power restored. We're grateful to the county and the sheriff for not having a curfew. I know that during recovery, many bars and restaurants offered free Wi-Fi, phone charging, water, and best water, and best of all, a hot meal and a cold beer. As we talked about at the last meeting, unlike in 2015, we have a great compromise from the industry here. That's the same compromise language that has been included in the amended ordinance. Since we last spoke, we've been able to meet with Florida State University's Government Affairs staff, and we've begun a very proactive conversation about how the industry and the universities might work together in a more meaningful way in the future. We've talked about our mutual interest in reducing underage drinking, as well as FSU facilitating a bartender training course with the bars. We are in full support of the amended ordinance, which does three things. It reduces bar hours from 4:00 AM to 3:00 AM, which we support. It increases penalties for violations from $500 to $1,000, which we support. And it removes language about consumption, which we support. After our conversations with Florida State, it's my understanding that they do support this language. So this compromise language represents a substantial step forward between our stakeholders. Thank you for this opportunity and this ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Thank you very much, Max. Yes, are there any other speakers on this?
That was the last speaker.
Commissioner Richardson.
I'd like to move, Mr. Mayor, that we approve the amended ordinance that sets the closing time at 3:00 AM and establishes the fines and removes the language prohibiting consumption up until the closing time of 3:00 AM.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments by Commissioners? Commissioner Miller.
I just wanted to point out that this, it makes it very clear that no one is allowed to sell anything after 2:00.
That's correct. Commissioners, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes four to one. Next item is 15.06. City Attorney.
15.03 is ordinance number 18-0-30. It is the first and only public hearing on that ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 1-7 general penalty continuing violations in the Code of General Ordinances to include a monetary fine where a fine has not otherwise been specifically provided, providing for conflicts, separability, and an effective date. The proposed ordinance simply provides for a fine of $100 if there's some provision in our code that doesn't specifically address a fine amount. So we can have public speakers.
Are there any public speakers?
No speakers.
Move approval.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. 15.04.
Item number 15.04 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 18-0-33, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Sections 14-3.317, 14-3.335 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee relating to police employees' pension provisions, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
No speakers.
Move approval.
There's a motion and a second on the item. If there are no comments, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. 15.05.
Item number 15.05 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 18-Z-21, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in single-family, two-family residential R3 on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts and separability, and providing an effective date.
No speakers.
No speakers on the item. There's a motion and a second. No comments. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. 15.06.
Item number 15.06 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 18-Z-24, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in residential preservation 1 RP-1 on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts and separability and providing an effective date.
Are there any speakers?
Move approval.
Second.
No speakers. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 15.07.
Item number 15.07 is the proposed amendment to the Southwood Development of Regional Impact, DRI, Integrated Development Order. It is the first and only public hearing.
Move approval.
Is there?
We do have speakers.
There's a motion and a second, and we do have speakers.
First speaker, David Weiss. Richard Deravi is here to answer questions, and then Allison Tant, Richard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you very much for the opportunity. David Weiss, Ozzie McMullen, 123 South Calhoun Street. Seeing as we're making this pretty brief, I'm going to make this even briefer than I intended. I know you've had a long meeting, so I am actually just going to introduce Ms. Allison Tant, Richard, who is the Board Chair for Independence Landing. Let her speak for a moment, and then I'll be available for any questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi again. Thank you, all of you, for looking at this possibility when we brought it to you back in December and seeing the potential and the promise. So I'm going to go fast because I've got three minutes. So I am the Chair of the Board. Several of us are wearing green shirts tonight, which talk about the compassion and the gift of this opportunity. There's our board members here, as well as family members here, as well as some potential residents here, and we're all in green to support this. We are a nonprofit. We started this, we became a nonprofit just for the purpose of developing Independence Landing to meet a growing societal need that's going to affect the public in a pretty massive way. This is the first generation of people with disabilities to routinely outlive their parents. There are 55,000 Floridians on the APD waitlist or on the list getting services. That does not include those who are missed or underdiagnosed and those who have not applied. Regulators believe that the number is actually closer to 150,000 in Florida. Housing experts believe that between 70,000 to 80,000 adults with disabilities are living at home right now with aging parents. When the last parent dies, these people have two real options. One is a group home, and one is a nursing home. Only a handful have the ability to move in with another family member to take care of them. So it is a really growing critical need. These are the same people who have benefited from all of the early intervention programs, the inclusion in public and private education, the same kids that have benefited from advances in medical care that can do more than they've ever been able to do in previous generations. And Independence Landing envisions a thriving, wonderful community that keeps the residents engaged and keeps them fulfilled so that when they get a job, they can keep a job with much more success. They will be much more independent. This is not for people who are medically fragile. This is not for people who need 24-hour care, but for people who want to have the life that we want for all of our children, whether they're disabled or not. So to that end, all of us on the Independence Landing Board and the families, we have 135 families who've completed the needs assessment survey that we have in the field who are interested in this housing option. We have had regular, I'm in Southwood Weekly. I call it Wonderful Wednesdays in the Wood because I'm up in Southwood having coffee with interested people every Wednesday, and I have been doing that for over a year, actually a year and a half. We have had multiple meetings with the CDD supervisors, with the Homeowners Association Board, and we've also had open houses of our own that people in the community have come. We gather our parents and our families on a quarterly basis for updates, and they're all here tonight. We've had fundraisers in the community. We won a national crowd rise competition. There's a lot of support, and that is because of the promise that you saw in us when we started down this. So what we would like to do is ask for your favorable consideration of this PUD amendment before you tonight. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your leadership, Allison.
That is.
Speaker.
All right, there is a motion and a second. Commissioners, if there are.
Without going into details on how the road has been traveled, but for those engaged and involved, know kind of where this started, and it made its way some ways across Tallahassee and finally ended up in the place it belongs. And so there are three, two people and then a group I want to recognize, if I could. The first is Allison, obviously, for all of your hard work and your leadership and the group that you put together and the energy level that you bring and the confidence that you bring, knowing that once you set your eyes on trying to do something, that first of all, to heck with you if you get in the way, but more importantly, you're going to end up with something that is going to be really special. So thank you for all that you've done. The second is a group, and that is, and you mentioned them, and that is the development of Southwood, how they embraced what you were trying to do, which was not always the case. And Southwood, having lived there, not anymore, but Southwood is a unique place, and it has diversity, and they're even now going to have more diversity within the 3,500 acres that make up Southwood. So thanks to all the residents and the leadership, the HOA and the CDD for what they've done. And the last one I want to recognize is a staff member for the City of Tallahassee, and I'm going to.
The city staff have been remarkable.
All the city staff, but one person in particular, and that is Wayne Tetter, who has held on to this idea since the very beginning because for reasons that he knows, this is very special to him. And Wayne, thank you for everything you've done along this way to make sure that we're at this point with his vote. And so having said that, I'll move the item.
Great. There is a motion and a second on the item. Commissioners, other comments? I want to thank all of you all for being here tonight. Allison, you want something done, put Tant on the mission. That is for sure. I know it well.
Thank you.
And I also know Allison well enough to know that she couldn't do it without being powered by all of you. And so thank you for what you all have done to lift this community and its needs into even much more higher public priority. There is a motion and a second on the item. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you and congratulations. Commissioners, we're now at item 15.08.
Item number 15.08 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 18-Z-26AA, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the Southwood Plan Unit Development Concept Plan on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
Are there any speakers?
No additional speakers.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the item. No speakers. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. If anybody wants to exit, now would be the time. We are going back to our regular order meeting, a regular gen. items.
I remember when she first came.
Mr. Mayor, could we take the 1303 and 1304 before 1302 so we could let those folks go?
Yeah, that'd be fine. There's no objection. Commissioners, we'll take items 13.03 and 13.04 out of order, beginning with item 13.03. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. In June, you approved the acquisition of a 12-acre parcel Town South Shopping Center at 2525 South Monroe Street for a future public safety campus. The campus, in addition to providing the current and future needs of the Tallahassee Police Department, will offer community and recreational spaces, training facilities, and public safety education services. The city's intention is to begin construction of the new public safety campus in early 2020. Staff has been in negotiations with the owners of the shopping center and are recommending acquisition of the property through eminent domain. Wayne Tetter is here to provide a brief presentation to give you an overview of how that process will work and answer questions.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I thought it might be a little helpful to kind of go over a little bit of background to show how we got to the site we did today and what this site could mean for this portion of our community. As you're all aware, there have been a number of community plans that have discussed what is intended to be in this part of our community as far as land use, from a land use perspective. Couple of plans real quickly that kind of rise to the top that's most recent. The Urban Land Institute effort that was done in 2015 started laying out the foundation of what we envision South City to be in the future. Following that, just recently this year, as part of the Orange Avenue Redevelopment Plan, not only did they focus on the Orange Avenue, Tallahassee Housing Authority property, they looked at the vision for the greater area in and around that and how it connects to the Tallahassee Housing Authority property. All of this, Commissioners, was done with a significant amount of public input. So when you see this vision that I'm going to be presenting in front of you, it's a result of the direction that we receive from the citizens within this area of our community. When you look at the Urban Land Institute plan, one of the big ideas was to create a town center where the shopping centers exist. Of course, you see that as the red area up on this map. When you dive into it a little closer, the red area is the subject site that's for the vote tonight. You look at Putnam Drive to the north, it's intended to be that spine, the major spine into and through the neighborhood, and then you notice the drainage ditch on the south side creating an amenity for the area residents and the businesses in and around that area, transforming that ditch into a usable greenway that serves our community. The Orange Avenue study that was done for the Orange Avenue apartment complex, they basically transformed, again, identified with the input of the citizens what they wanted the land uses in and around that area to be in the future. When you zoom in closer, you notice to the left-hand side, Tallahassee Police Headquarters. It was a conscious discussion with the citizens in and around that area. Part of that plan, it was determined that the relocation of the City of Tallahassee's Police Department to this area was crucial to the area's sustainable urban development. When you look at the site, just a little bit of background on the site, 12.3 acres. It has, and why it was chosen to be the site for the new public safety campus, has exceptional access to collector and arterial roadways, not local streets into the neighborhoods, but to major arteries in and around the area. It's served by all the essential infrastructure, water, sewer, gas, electric, has all of those things readily available to the site. And probably one of the most valuable things from a land use perspective is the entire property is, nearly the entire property is impervious, which means there'd be little to no stormwater management facilities required on that site. How this project, yes, ma'am?
Can I ask you a question? I know when we were talking about the Orange Avenue apartments, we were worried about the flood zones, FEMA flood zones. How do those affect this? And you can wait till the end to answer that.
Well, just real quickly, there's flooding that is touching on where the ditch is on the south side, but it is not extending to the site.
And the ditch is going to be reworked.
That is correct. It's a part of a blueprint 2000 project, rework project. So just to give you an understanding of what this new public safety campus could mean to this area, I wanted to just go over real quickly what the zoning in this area looks like. Notice Central Urban 45. The entire area is on Central Urban 45, which means high-density residential is allowed, commercial and office, great intensity. So when you plug in a significant investment for this public safety campus, what we expect in the future is all of these areas to start transforming into a higher density and intensity in this area. Where are we in the process? We are, in the next coming weeks, we're going to be looking at awarding the architectural and engineering components, as well as the construction management, award those contracts. Then we're going to be moving into a very lengthy process of design in 2019. At this point, basically, we'll transition from my service area to Cynthia Barber's area to lead that design effort and the construction effort. The design, again, would have a significant amount of public input through that process, and we do believe it'd take at least one year to get through that process. So the goal is to be ready for construction sometime in 2020. As we talk about this shopping center, there's been a lot of concerns in the community about the businesses in that area. There's two things I want you to look at, and really, nothing There's two things I want you to look at, and really, nothing against the businesses that are there, but we are in a shopping center that is in decline, from a visual perspective, as well as from a usage perspective. And I'll get into that in this next slide. So, when we're looking at the tenants, which is the most important component that we have heard up to this point, I did a little graphic that I wanted to kind of walk through with you. So, if you look at the property, it's about 130,000 square feet for the shopping center and is about half vacant. These are the vacant properties in the shopping center. Next two properties are the ones, the next two areas are the ones that expire this year. The leases expire for these by 2021, and then this one by 2023. So, we got a lot of those, the majority of this development will have leases that will be expiring in the very near future. One of the more difficult aspects of this is these last four, the last 20% of this development. Those, in some cases, expire 20 to 25 years from now, which makes it very difficult. If we're ready to move forward with construction, we have to deal with those leases that extend to that length of time. So, again, going to the major issue is dealing with the needs of the tenants. What we would like to do and what the recommendation in your agenda material is to provide relocation assistance, very similar to what we've done for FAMU Way. We want to utilize revenues from the leases in this business, so we intend to keep those businesses there all the way up until we are ready for construction. That means that the city of Tallahassee will then have to do leases, set up leases for all of those businesses. When we're talking about the relocation needs, we don't want to bring to you a standard program that just allows a certain amount of dollars for a specific process. We want to work with each one of those tenants individually. There will be, there will be needs that are different from one tenant to the other, and we need that flexibility to understand what those needs are for each of those tenants and have that flexibility to address those. As we briefed many of you, all of you seem to be really concerned about these tenants moving away from this immediate area. So, the focus is priority number one, keeping these tenants in and around this particular area. In order to start looking through that concept, and we know things are going to be changing, especially as you start investing in this property, we think that there's going to be other folks who want to invest, just like you've seen in Gaines Street and Cascades Park. Once you provide that public investment, there will be other people wanting to build new developments in this area. This is just a snapshot, and you start, the star is where our site is located, and there's about 85,000 square feet readily available for lease within this area. Now, again, trying to keep them closer to that node is going to be the goal that we understand you desire for these businesses. There was an added benefit. The property owner who owns the subject shopping center site also owns the site right across the street where you see the star. We have, in front of the CRA, we've heard some requests, some proposals to have some transformational improvements on that site. As I've indicated to you previously, the zoning will allow much more than a single-story shopping center in this area, but the developer or the property owner did commit to $200,000 for exterior improvements for this site on the west-hand side of the site. We think that's going to be a short-term investment. As you invest in this new public safety complex, again, we can see the shopping center intensifying and looking much better in the long-term vision. So, our recommendations, Commissioners, is to go through the process established in our agenda item, allocate the $5.5 million for the acquisition, to allow the tenants to remain in all the buildings. We may even seek additional tenants up until construction if we have that flexibility. I've been contacted by one in particular where he has a short-term need. We want the ability to provide that opportunity if they so choose. We also want to have, our recommendation is provide that relocation assistance by using those lease payments for the relocation funding source. We think that's going to be sufficient. If that's not, we'll come back at a later date for this commission. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Commissioner Richardson, followed by Commissioner Miller.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Wayne, you really have addressed the issues that were of concern to me that we've discussed before, and that top priority is to make every effort to retain these businesses on the south side of Tallahassee, so they don't leave the area, because there are people who work there and, but for the fact that they are located where they are, they might not be accessible to these, the individuals who are employed there. So, that will be important for them. Also, it's going to be important that they be on a bus route, so that those persons without transportation can access the public transportation system to get to these jobs as well. That's going to be important. We've talked about the need for the crosswalk from where the public safety complex is proposed to be built and the Piggly Wiggly Shopping Center complex. A lot of people don't, well, it's a dangerous intersection, and so we'll, and I understand we've got to work with DOT to make that happen. I know we've done that in other areas of the city, but that's going to be very important too, so that those people can access, that are now going to save a lot, will have safe access to the Piggly Wiggly for buying groceries and other items. And I guess I know, I heard you say the 200,000 is a short-term investment in improvements in that Piggly Wiggly Shopping Center. I hope that that's sufficient. I don't know that it is, and you correct me if I'm wrong, because I know that you all had developed a plan for improvements to that parking lot, and I don't recall what the price tag on that was at the time.
Commissioners, I believe when we did the entire sidewalk system throughout the area, we did additional landscaped areas in the parking facility. I believe it was upwards near $300,000, if I recall correctly.
Okay, okay, okay. So, that 200,000 would be a significant...
It would make a substantial impact. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Those are my issues.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller.
Well, I just wondered if there is any discussion of having retail as part of the public safety complex?
I think that's a great question. As Assistant City Manager Cynthia Barber is out there working with the design team and listening to the neighborhood, I think the sky's the limit as far as what this concept is going to be in the future. So, I think we'll note that. We'll have those discussions with the community.
All right, thank you.
Great. Are there other questions on the item? Seeing none?
I'll move the item.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Can I clarify that? That's option one and option two.
Yes.
Option one and option two. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes for one. Commissioners, we're now on to item 13.04.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, this item is to modify the city's, Commission's Real Estate Policy Number 136. It clarifies and makes the policy consistent throughout regarding the city manager's approval authority for the sale and disposition of property valued at less than $100,000.
Move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, item 13.04. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13.02.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last year, we have been bringing you various updates related to economic development activities within our community. Today, we'd like to, or tonight, we'd like to focus on economic development efforts occurring on the south side of our city. There is a significant amount of public investment being made in Tallahassee's south side. These investments, combined with strong comprehensive plan, planning, are resulting in new opportunities and improved quality of life for our residents. This investment is also spurring private investment. TJ Lewis and our planning department has done a fantastic job putting together this overview and really shining a light on things that are happening, and we wanted to bring this to you to give you some backdrop for efforts in this general area. So, TJ, please provide us an update.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to present some good news for the south side, particularly on investments underway, recently completed and programmed for the future. This commission has made the transformation of the south side a huge priority for the entire community, as is evident by the many special districts that overlap the south side and the various planning initiatives that have occurred in the area over the past decade. The comprehensive plan speaks to many goals for the south side. The top three are listed here. They include the increased population growth towards the southern part of Tallahassee, the retention and the increase of employment opportunities, and the attainment of an income mix for jobs in the area. The planning department has identified roughly $1.6 billion in planned investments for the south side over the next decade. They're listed here in sort of a descending like financial investment order, and we will cover them more in depth in alphabetical order by category, but we are really excited to see that these investments cover a wide range of areas related to improving people's quality of life. So, you can see here sort of phased the various projects that we've looked at over, you know, different parts in time, those that are complete, those coming one to two years, three to five years, six years or more. There are a lot to go over here. We won't go over all of them in detail with this presentation, but we will hit on many of the highlights for the south side. And we'll start with beautification. There is $17.6 million in beautification projects that are slated for the south side. These projects aren't simply beautification projects. In terms of aesthetics, they also serve another purpose. This first project is a, it's dubbed the Orange Meridian Placemaking Project. It's a two-component project. The first component is a lake-like amenity, Lake Ella-like amenity for the stormwater pond that sits at the, basically the block surrounded by Orange Avenue, Meridian, and South Monroe. There is a large stormwater pond there that they're looking to transform into a Lake Ella style pond. And then there is across the street a parcel where a Star Metro Superstop is proposed. And this is an example of what a Star Metro Superstop could look like in this picture. Around FAMU, as the university, you'll see later on in this presentation, plays a major role in many of the planned improvements around FAMU. We have some major intersection improvements proposed, and these are blueprint improvements. The fairgrounds will see some beautification and modernization of its grounds under a proposed blueprint project that could also provide an opportunity to transform a portion of the property fronting South Monroe Street for future economic development. And speaking of economic development, we're looking at economic diversification as the second category here. Economic diversification was listed as a key goal for the comprehensive plan, and so this helps to attain that income mix that we previously discussed. Here in Innovation Park, which is definitely an anchor, an economic anchor of the south side, they are currently planning a new technology incubator/business accelerator facility. It will be roughly 40,000 square feet. I've been told it's a $20 million investment that should come online within the next two or three years. Danfoss Turbocore, which is already a business in Innovation Park, is looking to expand its operations in Tallahassee by 20,000 square feet. We've been told that will add roughly 120 new high-paying jobs to the area. It's a $12 million investment. Education is the largest financial component of this report, due in large part to FAMU's new master plan. FAMU has proposed various exciting new components to its campus, including a brand-new football stadium complex, which includes the stadium itself, relocating from Wanish Way closer to Adams Street. The stadium would come with a housing complex, a retail complex, some associated parking, as well as some instructional facilities for education. FSU is also sprucing things up at its southwest campus, doing renovations at the Don Veller Golf Course and the related golf course facilities. FSU is also working to produce a research and commercialization building, as well as working in concert with FAMU on an expansion to the College of Engineering. Leon County Schools has announced aggressive plans, has already begun work, actually, renovating Rickards High School and Fairview Middle School. Combined, these two projects will total $50 million in investments. All right, so next on our list is environmental protection. We've identified $6.1 million in future investments in this category. Five separate projects dot the landscape along the south side, significant projects. The Debbie Lightsea Nature Park starts in the west. It's a project that's currently in design phase, which would offer some bicycle recreation, outdoor recreation amenities, as well as just preserve the natural landscape. Central Pond Trail will allow for a beautiful enhancement to Cascade, I'm sorry, Innovation Park. The Dr. Charles Billings Greenway is also another proposed enhancement to Tallahassee's Greenways Network. Will run roughly the length of the Jake Gaither Golf Course, situated between Lake Bradford and, let's say, Wanish Way. There will be a connection from the St. Mark's Bicycle Trail at Orange Avenue, which is also proposed under the Blueprint 2000 Master Plan. Southwest Sector Greenway, another proposed blueprint project, aims to connect the area around Rickards High School to Capital Circle Southeast and along Blarstone Road, going south towards Capital Circle. Health and Wellness is a, another theme on the south side. We've seen $55 million already invested with the VA Center, and soon Planet Fitness, actually, it's already open. Planet Fitness is the first large-scale fitness center open on the south side. It moved in where, when Dixie moved out, and it's open 24/7 for anyone who wants to stay fit on the south side. And just a keynote, if you're a Planet Fitness member, you can use any of the Planet Fitness locations in town. Capital Regional Medical Center has also proposed a new facility at the corner of Orange Avenue and Capital Circle Southeast. It's a $12 million investment. Pruitt Health Skilled Nursing Facility is a location that's actually under construction along Orange Avenue East, within, slightly within the Southwood development. It's a $12 million investment as well, estimated. VA Tallahassee Healthcare Center, as we've already discussed, is already open and operational. That was a $55 million project. CarePoint, also known as Big Ben Cares, recently located last year. It's a $12 million investment, fully operational on South Monroe. Those are, those are just many of the significant healthcare projects that are, that are already in the works or completed in the south side area. Housing, housing is a very important part of our efforts to improve the south side. And one thing, one project we're particularly excited about is this Orange Avenue Apartments redevelopment this commission has been involved in. It's exciting to us because it allows for the current residents in the, in the community to remain in place and for the redevelopment of this community to be a more beautiful place, and it will also be joined by another segment, another component, another phase of the project, which will double its size, 190 units, to allow a general population to join those already in place. Evergreens at Southwood is a project brought us, brought to us by the private sector. It's recently opened on, on the south side. Low Water Apartments, another project under construction right now. It's on South Blarstone Road. Retro Student Living and Haven Student Living are some newly added projects that are new to the pipeline, closer to the campuses for students on the south side. Infrastructure-wise, we see $450, $45 million coming soon for widening projects along Orange Avenue, Capital Circle Southwest. The last two remaining segments will take Capital Circle from two lanes to a divided six-lane roadway with multi-use trails and landscaping and various other amenities. We've got the upcoming widening of Woodville Highway, which we're very excited about, and widening of Crawfordville Road as well. Airport Gateway will enhance several roads on the south side. It will create a beautiful gateway into the city, to the campuses, to Innovation Park, from the Tallahassee International Airport. So, look for that to come soon within the next decade for the south side. FAMU Way is recently opened, Segment Two of a beautiful roadway project. Segment Three is coming within this plan horizon, which will connect the balance of the road to Lake Bradford. It will be a continuous road from downtown to Lake Bradford, and it plays in with that airport gateway. The Lower Central Drainage Ditch is a project that's underway right now. It's a stormwater... It's a stormwater management project. It will improve our ability to control stormwater while at the same time allowing us the ability to accommodate additional growth on the south side. The Magnolia Drive Mixed-Use Trails, a sidewalk project where a sidewalk never existed before. There are more phases of this project proposed, which is why you see it here. This part is complete, the left side of the screen. You'll see sidewalks on both sides of the road and future landscaping as well. And as far as safety goes, the previous item was a great segue into this one. Major investment in the public safety complex by the City of Tallahassee for the TPD relocation. As you can see here, there are various concepts in consideration in addition to the police department, so it does include some retails, commercial, green space, all going towards creating that town center that was previously discussed. So the south side investment, it's growing over the next 10 years from $55 million we see today, $252 million over the next two years, due in large part to improvements in healthcare and education. You'll see a big jump in education spending as FAMU implements its five-year campus plan, and the infrastructure projects begin three to five years from now for the widening of Orange Avenue, Capital Circle. And going forward to six years and beyond, you'll see more than $1.5 billion, maybe perhaps exceeding $1.6 billion in public spending on the south side. So we've seen what this type of spending has done in the past. Gaines Street, Franklin Boulevard, Cascades Park, all suffered from their own problems. Gaines had the blight, Franklin Boulevard had the flooding, Cascades Park was contaminated. What happened? We spent money, we got crown jewels for our community. So that goes to say $1.6 billion for Tallahassee's south side. What should we expect? Well, income mix for better jobs and an improved quality of life. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to compliment you on your presentation.
Oh, thank you very much.
I love the color coding. It made things really clear to follow.
You know, TJ used to do these presentations for free. Now we're paying him to do it. Really well done. Thank you for that. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the only component of this, TJ, that I see missing, and I know that we've got a proposal coming to us for the bond community at our next commission meeting, but neighborhood improvement.
Yes, sir. That slide I showed you with all that text on it, it included many, many small neighborhood projects, which collectively are very significant. Many sewer, underground utility projects, sidewalk projects were there on the list, but in the interest of keeping it brief tonight, they weren't pictured. But there are many here on the list if you want the presentation.
Move us, acceptance of the report.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept staff report. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again to TJ and the entire team.
Mayor, are we going to get copies of these presentations?
Soon we can, yes. Thank you, Wayne. We'll get those.
I know you didn't have anything else to do, you know, so.
Commissioners, we are now at the point in the agenda where we will hear from speakers on non-agended items. Mr. Treasury Clerk, are there any speakers?
Mayor, we have one speaker on unagended items. That is Nick Patronas. As with our earlier portions of the meeting, if you'll give us your name and address, we'll give you in exchange three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Nick Patronas. I live at 11, 1211 Walton Drive here in Tallahassee.
Could you come closer to the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it again. I'm Nick Patronas. I live at 1211 Walton Drive in Tallahassee. Aside from a few years serving our country overseas and a few years working on desk and running a company, I'm a lifelong resident of Tallahassee and a native of the city. I'd like to inquire about utilities infrastructure. I understand over the last several years that I've been watching the budget. I've seen where utilities, I guess additional funding has been transferred to other areas. And I'd just like to ask if we're looking at upgrading the infrastructure? I understand, I think, I believe I was told by somebody in utilities that it's something along the lines of $1 million per mile to do underground utilities, which is expensive, but every year we wait, that's going to increase because of inflation. So I would just ask that we look at working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers?
There are no other speakers, Mayor.
Commissioners, any items for sharing? Commissioner Ziffer?
Without going into great detail, because I don't want to do anything that's political here, but for those people that are running for office, I wish them the best of luck. I wish them great fortune, and I wish them success. Having said that, I'll leave it there.
Commissioner?
I just wanted to mention this, because I've been sitting here tonight with a heavy heart, or this afternoon, and that is because I called the Quincy Buick dealership today because I need some repair work done on my car, and that's where I bought it, and that's where I take it when I want it repaired. And I asked for the service manager, and the guy who answered the phone told me that he wasn't there anymore, that he was the first person that we heard about that was killed in the storm. A tree fell on his house in the Greensboro area, killed him, and pinned his wife next to him in the house. She was taken to the hospital, from what I understand, has been released, but she still has some medical issues. And I was just so taken aback by it. He was a wonderful guy. No, he was, Steve Sweet was his name. He was a military veteran and had worked there as the service manager for years and just was a wonderful guy. And I just wanted to share that with you all here this evening and ask for your prayers for his family.
Indeed.
As they go through the restoration and certainly grieving his past untimely death.
I think many of us had read about that in the paper. It certainly feels different now hearing your own personal testimonial. Our thoughts and prayers are clearly up for his wife and for his family. Commissioners, any other ideas? Commissioner Miller?
Well, I wanted to share with everyone a story that I heard this week, and that had to do with our mayor. Apparently, our mayor was out alone with nobody around, no photographers, no nobody, all by himself. You can verify this for sure. He was an Indian head, and he was picking up, cleaning up, working alone with no audience, with nobody. And one of the people that wandered by happened to be driving around, it was a photographer, a local photographer, and he happened to be driving around, taking pictures of the storm, and was attracted by this person that he saw working over there, and he took a picture, so.
Well, I will tell you, I, it was selfish. The road was blocked.
Oh, don't do that. Don't do that. Don't do that.
And we couldn't get through it.
I think it was the tree.
When you knew that Jamie wasn't going to do it.
Exactly. But, and then Bob rides up on a bicycle. He can't get through it either. He turns back around and goes back the other way. But you know what, you all, and I know you all know this as well, but people all throughout our community, I mean, I got home and people had moved stuff off my lawn.
Yeah.
You know, just the way in which neighbors came together was probably the most heartwarming thing of this whole exercise. Scott climbing poles illegally, as if he were a lineman.
Probably a lot of illegal.
Right. But really, that for me was the high, if there were a high point, it was people really stepped up for their neighbors and their friends. I had, I had no trees go down in Hermine, four go down in this one, and one through my neighbor's roof, and they didn't even want to call to let me know. They thought I was busy, and so they figured they'd tell me later, and I come home and there's a tarp over their roof.
I was actually going to ask you.
You saw that, yeah.
How you were the only person on your street, basically, without a tree down. I mean, your street was destroyed.
I had four, and they cleaned them up.
That's great. That's fantastic.
Anyway, I was proud of you, and it was impressive.
For that, Commissioner?
Yeah, I wanted to say something about, something my wife and I saw last night. I'm headed over to Jackson County tomorrow for a meeting, and I, we went to Costco last night and got a Jeep full of formula, baby food, because there's a real need for baby's material and things. So the number of people I saw in Costco that had a list, that they were filling up their buggies and their big carts, because they were doing the same thing. This community not only stepped up for our immediate neighbors, but what they're doing for our neighbors to the west, it was, it was unbelievable. I would say probably better than half the people that were in that store last night at 7:00 were buying for other people. And that says a lot about who we are. And I just, it does the hard good to see that.
I agree. I agree. Well, Commissioner, Mr. Manager or Treasury Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to mention one thing just from today. As we've talked about the storm and the tremendous response and the great work done by Rob and others leading the other utilities divisions, Reggie, Juan, and others, that gets recognized. Fitch Ratings, every couple of years, reviews our rating, and today got word that our rating upgrade from AA- to AA with a stable outlook, and upgrade is always welcome, but I just wanted to read a couple of the reasons. The rating upgrade is based on the energy system's overall improvement in financial performance. As a personal aside, it was good financial performance to begin with, but it's even improved, with increasing liquidity evidenced by cash on hand and declining leverage, less, reduced debt. Further, leverage is expected to remain manageable given the lack of additional debt plans. Just like all of the storm planning happened on purpose, that happened on purpose. It's managed financially, it's managed operationally, and I think that's a tribute. I'm assuming, I need to, should have checked with Kent Olson before I read this, but I'm assuming that they had done some of this work and were ready to release their report, but needed to wait until after the storm, because there's a brief paragraph at the bottom, and obviously, that's also a positive for us. But I just think it speaks well, not just to the immediate utility services that we provide, but the long term.
Excellent. And on a credit increase. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.